Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming to your city council this evening. First thing we're going to do is turn off our cell phones. My name is Paul Blackburn. I'm the mayor. I'll be running the meeting. Uh, the next thing we do is we take a moment to acknowledge that the land where we're doing business was occupied by folks for thousands of years before our folks came, and I think it's good just to keep that in mind and to keep reminding ourselves of that. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. And the next thing I'd like to do is acknowledge the fact that I spent the majority of the last week inside looking out the window and wondering how it was going out there. Adam Schmidt, our Public Works Director and his folks spent much of the storm outside, making sure that everything kept operating in spite of this really quite notable event. So please pass on our gratitude to all the work. By Friday night, the Portland TV did call and wanted to hear from the mayor that like the lights were still on and stuff. So we, 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 we had, they had a big storm. We had a big storm. Thanks to the folks for getting us through it. Okay, uh, I have, and any agenda additions or corrections, Abigail?
No, Mayor, there are none.
Great. So our first step always is to have, have business from the audience. I have, I have both Mike Howard and Nan Notaboom sign up to speak to Parks and Rec. That is coming up on the agenda. Would you guys like to speak now or at the time of the Parks and Rec item? Great. Now for Nan, and how about Mike? Let Nan speak. Okay, great. So, uh, in that case, we'll start with David McCalek. And come on up, and there's a flying saucer. Touch the rim and it will turn green and then you're on.
All right.
And if you could keep it to about three minutes, that just makes things manageable. Thank you, David.
It won't be that long. Um, I am here also to talk about the Parks Department and the, um, proposal to move the Aquatic Center. And I think it's great that the city and the parks are collaborating to make that happen. Um, when I read that, oh, by the way, I'm David Mahalik. I am the president of the Gorge Pickleball Association, so I'm here to talk about pickleball. Um, and when I read the proposal, I see that there is the movement of the tennis courts and the movement of the baseball fields, but there's no mention of pickleball in the proposal. Pickleball, as you may know, is the fastest growing sport in the United States. Um, locally, we have three hundred and seventy-one active members in our association. There's about two hundred other people locally that play regularly. And in the summer months, we bring in, I mean, more than two hundred people um, are in town that want to play pickleball while they're enjoying some of the other sports that we have to offer here in this beautiful community. Um, the wait times at the three courts that we have at Golden Eagle often can exceed thirty minutes for a single game. And there's dozens of people waiting at the Golden Eagle. Um, and it's just inadequate. This summer, with Abigail's help, the Gorge Pickleball Association revamped the courts at Co., not a park, but at Co. And, um, I'm expecting those two courts are going to get heavy use this summer. That gives us a total of five courts in the community. Um, that's not adequate, and with the revamping of the Aquatic Center, I'm thinking that y'all are going to be putting in new tennis courts. Each tennis court will support four pickleball courts. Um, four pickleball courts will allow sixteen people to play simultaneously um, versus two playing a singles game of tennis. If we can get four tennis courts, that would give us sixteen pickleball courts, which is what we need. And we need sixteen courts because it would be in the county and the city's best, um, favor. Because we could then host a tournament. And tournaments bring in vast numbers of people. There, you would be shocked how many people travel to various cities around the area and regionally to go to pickleball tournaments. And with that would come the corresponding um, revenues and, you know, people drinking beers at our breweries, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm here to say the Gorge Pickleball Association is happy to help with any of the planning um, that's necessary to see that we get pickleball lines painted on the tennis courts. Super easy to do. The cost is minuscule compared to what y'all are looking to do. Um, we will even, meaning that Gorge Pickleball Association will, um, provide the nets. Um, if we're providing the nets, I would like to have a place I can store the nets because sixteen nets would take up a little bit of space. But I need a place to store the nets, and then the Gorge Pickleball Association would manage, you know, the play and the interface with the tennis people like we do at Golden Eagle, et cetera, et cetera. So anything I can do to help, um, some of y'all know how to get in touch with me, otherwise, um, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, David. Thanks for your leadership of that group. Next, we have Nan Notaboom, followed by Erin Baumhack.
Still good?
Green.
Hello, Council. My name is Nan Notaboom, and I live at thirty-one twenty-five Farwood Road in Odell. And I'm here to address the City Council as a local citizen who uses the amenities in this city and county, including Jackson Park and the pool. I am here to ask you to agree to the possibility of the Parks and Rec District building a pool next to Jackson Park. Here's the vision. A beautiful park, the gem of the city, seamlessly integrated with a first-rate aquatic center. The Aquatic Center has numerous improvements over the existing pool, of course, but also because of its improved location and seating, it has a gym slash community center, more parking, more space, more capacity, and more amenities than it could have in its current spot. Uh, the cherry on top is a splash pad located outside, easily accessible by Jackson Park users. Imagine a family having a picnic in the park on a hot summer day with children running over to play in the free public splash pad. That is the vision we are asking you to have. A beautifully integrated park, public park and pool with an eventual possibility of a beautifully integrated public safety campus for our community. In your previous discussion of this opportunity, you expressed concerns about the optics of allowing this. As an elected official myself, I know that you must consider what is best for your constituents. And in fact, that's exactly what I'm asking you to do. I urge you to look at the big picture. We are all part of the same community, and every one of your constituents is also a taxpayer and a constituent of the Parks District. This opportunity does not require any land to be sold or taken out of the public domain. It's all public land. Putting roadblocks, conditions, or expensive requirements in place which make this proposal more cumbersome will cost our taxpayers more. If you're wondering how your constituents feel, you will soon hear the results of a survey that confirms that they want you to seize this opportunity. The Parks and Rec District will probably make a decision about this, its bid to build a new aquatic center this week. Please let them know that this opportunity is something you are excited about. Show your constituents that you have the vision to do something amazing for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Nan. Nan, who's the Chair of the Parks and Rec District Board. Thank you for your service, Nan. Next, Erin, followed by Mike Howard. Nope, Mike's gonna skip, followed by Gary online. So Gary, be getting ready to, uh, speak to us. You're, you're good.
I'm good. Thanks. That's my first buzzer. All right, uh, Erin Baumhackel, uh, co-owner of Solstice with our cafe, and also a member of the Oregon Independent Restaurant Association. Um, just wanted to take the opportunity, we all, you know, endured the storm together, but just wanted to give a little perspective as far as from a restaurateur's, uh, experience this past week. Uh, you know, we go through storms every year. Um, it's not really anything new except for this storm. Um, the storm was big. This was bigger than usual. And it happened over, uh, MLK Weekend. Uh, for us, at Solstice, uh, MLK Weekend is about forty-plus percent of our sales for January. So for us, that equated to a loss, uh, this last week to ten days of about seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, that equates to about thirty thousand dollars and lost, um, uh, lost wages. So not only for the business was it a hit, but it was a really big hit for our staff as well. Of course, we do our best in juggling and trying to bring them in. Of course, we do our best in juggling and trying to bring them in, keep, keep them home and safe, those kind of things. Bring them in. There isn't actually work for them to do, but we do it anyways. So, um, not really here for sympathy, empathy, or pity. It's really a matter of just sharing, um, how impacted restaurants, and sure, other small businesses were hit in similar ways as well. Uh, the Restaurant Association did, uh, email out a press release past week and the past couple days uh, with some ideas, with some thoughts of ways to support small businesses, restaurants in particular. Um, and some of the thing, you know, this year that was digging a hole even deeper than the usual. We probably won't go into the black until midsummer, where historically it was Q2, uh, where we do it. So we're asking for some relief right away if possible. I personally don't know what these level, uh, these levers are, other than the ones that the Restaurant Association noted, uh, like payroll taxes, uh, some leniency and some of the other utility taxes and things like that. Those will be huge. Again, my business, we're on seventeen, been business seventeen years now. Um, we'll, we'll, we'll go into more debt. We'll make it happen. Um, but I think, uh, for a lot of smaller restaurants that don't have representation, um, they're going to take a really big hit. We've already seen, uh, from the pandemic, a lot of places closed, people, uh, places already, um, yeah, on, on the, on the edge. And this storm is, uh, not going to help that cause. So any decisions that are made, uh, immediate or in the next couple, uh, quarters, uh, that would be in favor of small business, restaurant in particular, will be appreciated. That's really it. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. When I was talking to the TV station, they were definitely of the mindset of, okay, everybody, you missed your chance to go to the gorge. Get out there when the smoke cleared, when the, when the, when the road's clear. So they, they were in that mindset for what it's worth.
Absolutely. And our, and our guests and our locals always come out big.
Thanks, Erin. Okay, now we're going to do online. Gary McFarlane is on Zoom. I think we have to permit you, and then you have to click, and let's see how it goes.
Like, allow them to talk?
Okay, Gary, we've allowed you to talk. Great, I, I hear. Gary, I think I hear you.
Okay, this will be brief. This is, uh, speaking to the agenda item with respect to Gorge Grohn's presentation later in the meeting.
Great.
Uh, and I just wanted to, uh, I read the information and I wanted to, uh, uh, speak to you briefly, uh, as a supporter of Gorge Grohn. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Gary McFarlane. I'm a resident here in Hood River. And I wanted to speak about that Gorge Grohn agenda item. I've been fortunate to be involved with Gorge Grohn Food Network for over ten years. This includes patronage, volunteer support, and part-time market support employment of last year in two thousand and twenty-three. I personally have seen the substantial increase in the number of vendors, patrons, produce, meats, and crafts that are offered. The efforts of Gorge Grohn to increase the use of local offerings are tremendous. Not only does this support our farmers, ranchers, and crafters, it facilitates distribution of their great products to visitors to Hood River in this area, local purchases of healthy, organic foods, and enables those less fortunate from health or financial reasons to use the SNAP EBT program to access foods they might never otherwise experience. I personally have observed countless EBT patrons this year express their profound gratitude for the opportunity to purchase sixty dollars' worth of produce for twenty dollars off of their EBT cards. I heartily recommend your ongoing support of this excellent community benefit. The multiplier effect is profound. And again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gary. Thanks for your, uh, thanks for your work there and for letting us know. And then the final thing on business from the audience is I understand we have a little bit of a passel of high school students here. I'm not going to put anybody on the spot, but could you raise your hand if you're here from the school class? Would somebody be brave enough to tell me what class it is? Who's the teacher? Thanks you very much for showing up. I hope it's, uh, I hope it's useful to you. Thanks, Mr. Keller, for letting us know. Okay, I think that's the end of business from the audience. We're going to move on to the rest of the agenda. The first presentation is, we have a new county administrator. Hooray! So we wanted to invite Allison Williams to come, just the first, you know, there's, I don't think there's any, uh, collaborative projects we're going to agree on tonight, but just to meet and greet and so that we've all met each other when, when things come up.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for the invitation, first and foremost, Allison Williams. I'm the new county administrator for Hood River County. We are, uh, I have my husband along with me, Alan, and thrilled to be residents of your city. We are city residents and, uh, the county. I think several of you participated in the interview process, and so I'm very appreciative of making it through that. Um, we're thrilled to be here. Uh, I've been digging in since December fourth and, uh,
And digging out.
And, and, well, yes, no. And, uh, uh, I would say that in the last week, uh, nothing to test your understanding of your organization and to walk through an emergency. And, um, I just, I am very thankful to Abigail. We've established a great relationship, uh, working through what needed to be worked, worked through in this last week in particular. And so I think that bodes well for us as we head, uh, forward in this work. We have a lot of collaborative projects to work on together, the county and the city, and, um, I have an open door. I have just loved getting to know the community, our employees, and all of you, and, uh, look forward to being here uh, as a part of this great area. So any questions for me? I didn't tell you much about my background, but, uh, it's out there on our quarterly news.
Welcome to both of you. I'm glad you're here.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
We look forward to working with you. Thanks for being here.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Gorge Grohn. Is it Hannah? It is Hannah. Hello, Hannah.
Hello, everyone. Gary, if you're still listening, thank you for your kind words. You're a great team member. Um, so on behalf of Hood River Farmers Market and Gorge Grohn Food Network, I want to thank you for waiving the lot use fees for last year. Um, so since about twenty seventeen, this council has waived our lot rental fees, and we've put that, um, savings into our SNAP match program. Um, as you likely saw from my letter, we made significant changes to the SNAP match program last year. Um, so SNAP, formerly known as food stamps, is a federal, uh, kind of food benefit program for low-income families and individuals. In the past, for every benefit dollar that a customer spent at the market, we would match them up to fifteen. So they put fifteen dollars on their card. We gave them thirty to spend. Um, we piloted a new and more robust, uh, SNAP match program this year, so we partnered with, uh, a statewide nonprofit Farmers Market Fund, uh, that provides the Double Up Food Bucks programs for farmers markets throughout Oregon. And they gather federal and state grant, um, dollars to help do this. Um, so by adding Double Up Food Bucks and then by increasing our match from fifteen to twenty dollars, we were able to offer this tripling program, um, that Gary mentioned. So if a customer put twenty dollars on their EBT card, we gave them sixty dollars to spend at the market, which is, like I mentioned, a pretty robust increase, but we felt that that change was really important this year. Um, making healthy local food, uh, available to everyone in our community is the cornerstone of our work at Gorge Grohn. Um, and we, uh, knew that federal nutrition assistance benefits were ending, um, or the bonus that folks got during the pandemic was ending in March of, uh, last year. So what that meant is a, a, you know, a standard family would typically receive about four hundred and fifty dollars a month um, with that pandemic allotment. Um, in March of last year, that went down to about three hundred dollars, so quite a significant decrease. Um, after SNAP benefits were cut, uh, Fish Food Bank said that they noticed a definite increase in use, um, uh, and increased clients. And so some folks were even reporting that their SNAP allotments were about twenty dollars a month. Um, we most often see that amongst seniors at the farmers market where they get such, um, small benefits that they really opt to come to the farmers market to use that, that small increase and get that tripling, um, benefit. Um, so we knew all this, and we felt that the need to fill in gaps left by insufficient food assistance programs was really essential in helping make local food accessible to everyone. Um, and so the, the benefits of this program are pretty unique. Um, I like to call it a triple win, right? So families are bringing home more fruits and vegetables, small farmers get a financial boost, and our local economy thrives. So with the addition of Double Up Food Bucks, that brought in an extra twenty-five thousand dollars just for fruits and vegetable sales at the market. So that means that local farmers really noticed a difference, and fruit and vegetable sales were up twenty percent this year. Um, through this work, we helped to ensure that a lot of state and federal benefits, um, that are sometimes spent outside of our community are spent here with local, local businesses. And a study done in Seattle noted that for every hundred thousand dollars spent at a farmers market, ninety-nine thousand dollars stayed in the state and is respent locally about three times. Um, so just kind of some data at a glance, we increased SNAP sales, not including the match, just the EBT benefit by ninety-five percent um, at the market this year. Um, Gorge Grohn, we ourselves gave out about that twenty-five thousand dollars, plus about twenty-five thousand dollars from, um, Double Up Food Bucks and Farmers Market Fund. We also notably have an extremely high redemption rate at the market, about ninety-five percent. Um, I work with both Oregon State Farmers Market Association and Washington, Washington State Farmers Market Association, and most markets see like seventy, eighty percent redemption, so ninety-five is quite high. Um, and so altogether, this SNAP, SNAP match and Double Up Food Bucks benefits brought in about seventy-three thousand dollars in extra sales to our farmers and vendors this year. Um, and we're serving more folks than ever. So, um, we ask every time someone makes a transaction on their EBT card, if it's their first time using their card at the market. Uh, two hundred and eleven people use their card for the first time at the market this year. Um, each market day, we typically serve an average of forty-five folks. Last year, that average was eighteen. So quite a, quite a big, uh, increase there. Um, so in addition to our Double Up Food Bucks and SNAP match success, we had a lot of success in other ways. We supported ninety family farmers and small businesses through our market. We increased vendor sales by seventeen percent. We hosted seventeen local organizations to provide free community outreach at the market. And earlier, um, last winter, we hosted a new and prospective vendor info session in Spanish to help cultivate more Latino, Latina, and Latinx vendors at the market. Um, so through our work, the market has become this really crucial business incubator, um, and economic, economic driver. Uh, so Hood River Farmers Market currently garners more than three quarters of all gorge, uh, farmers market sales, uh, gross sales. Nearly two hundred people are employed by our farmers market vendors, and our farmers, uh, work and preserve more than, uh, ten thousand acres of farmland in the Columbia Gorge. Um, markets provide a really important low-barrier entry point, uh, to, uh, farms and food businesses. Um, so forty-one percent of farm and food businesses at the market are new and beginning, so meaning they've been in business less than ten years. And for a quarter of vendors at the farmers market this year, it was their first year selling at the market. Um, markets can also be an especially important business, um, tool for owners who are, uh, who have limited access to capital, often required to start a business. So this includes, um, Black, Hispanic, Latino, Latina, Latinx, um, owners, Native American or Native Alaskan communities, and women. Eighty-one percent of our businesses are either owned or co-owned by, uh, by women, uh, which is up fifteen percent from last year. Thirteen percent of our farm and food businesses are Hispanic, um, or Latino, Latina, Latinx owned, which is up seven percent from last year. Um, and eight and a half percent of our farm and food businesses are Native Alaskan or Native, uh, American owned. So we are again gearing up for another successful season, hopefully in two thousand and twenty-four. We will continue to focus on ensuring fresh local food is accessible to everyone in our community, and we aim to continue our robust SNAP and Double Up Food Bucks program this year. So I can ask the city waive the rental fee for the two thousand and twenty-four season with the understanding we'll use that savings for the match program, and I'm happy to answer any questions that have.
Thank you, Hannah. I know in past years we've asked for some kind of information about that, sort of the outcomes, and that was super informative. Thank you for having that, uh, well, well, well-prepared presentation for us. Any, any questions?
Thank you, uh, Hannah. Commend you and Gorge Grohn for all of your efforts. I appreciate the outcomes data on your successful market. I do have a question for you around what sort of marketing took place or is taking place, especially with the amount of SNAP funds that are being matched. So how are you partnering with DHS or local clinics just to inform those patients that there is more access at the farmers market?
Yep. In the past, our biggest tool when we, uh, would ask folks, like, how did you learn about, you know, that we took SNAP, and a lot of people would be like, oh, I just saw the sign at the market. This year was a definitely a different answer, and they heard from DSHS. And, um, a lot of that was, you know, I drop off flyers every year. A fifteen-dollar incentive isn't too much if, you know, you have to take a carload of kids, you got to find parking, you know, all this stuff. A forty-dollar incentive is a lot more, and, um, especially, uh, you know, caseworkers and, and folks, um, at DHS were really excited about that change. So we worked with them a lot, but we also work, um, you know, through the Gorge Food Security Coalition, um, through, you know, like mainstream, you know, Instagram, Facebook, all of these things, which is also where people would mention that they, they heard us. Um, in addition to just, you know, posters and signage, things like that. Yeah.
I just want to again, thank you all. And, and us as a council, this is an opportunity for us to partner with local, uh, companies here, agencies in the gorge, where we're not necessarily offering a service, but we are waiving the fee so that more equitable access is available for those, for our constituents here. Uh, no concerns for me to continue supporting. I would like to challenge you, though, to increase your Latino, Latina, Latinx, and your Native American numbers. I couldn't find data from last year. Um, but I would challenge you all to increase those numbers, and I'd be happy to help collaborate in any way to make sure that that can happen.
Totally, yeah. And we did take your feedback from last year for the same thing, which is why we started that Info Night. So it's, yeah, I agree. It's a goal that we're definitely looking towards. Yeah.
Didn't speak to the Mercado de Valle up in Odell. Like, is that going good?
Yeah, um, I think they are looking at a possible location change, um, for this coming year, but all, otherwise it's going pretty good, um, especially kind of reboundings post-pandemic. Um, yeah, it happens twice a month in this, in the summer.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Uh, as mentioned before, super informative. Uh, I have no questions. I just need to disclose, uh, that my wife is a vendor at the market. Um, so just to make sure everybody knows that, uh, and, uh, yeah, thanks for all the great work you're doing. Thanks, Derek.
Well, just quickly say, uh, thank you for all the data. As you know, we love that. Um, and then, yeah, I, I obviously I know it's ongoing, and I appreciate Gladys's challenge, but it, it is nice to see after, you know, years of this, that there is really this, you are starting to see real success and momentum and, and making the market more welcoming for both vendors and for shoppers. And I think that's a real benefit to the community, so thank you.
There's a motion on page three.
I move to approve the request to waive the two thousand and twenty-four permit and parking lot usage fees for Gorge Grohn Food Network in support of the SNAP match program.
Moved by Rivera.
Second.
Second by Saunders. This, this, discussion? All in favor?
I.
Thanks, Hannah. That's great.
Thank you.
All opposed? Several time of motion passes. Thank you, Hannah. Great, moving on to Hood River Valley Parks and Rec. And I see also that we have a few more of our elected officials here in the, in the audience. Could you raise your hand if you're on the Parks Board, please? Thank you for your high-paid service.
All right. Well, uh, thank you very much. The presentation from the, that's, oh, I've got it right here. I'm just wondering if they'll be able to see it too, or they can you see it there?
They're figuring it out. Hang on.
You need to share your screen.
Oops.
So go back to Zoom.
All right.
And now you need to share your presentation. Yep, share screen. There you go.
Okay. And wait, that's a video. Sorry. Okay, uh, yeah, I'll take the back light. Okay, uh, yeah, I'll take the bad ones. Oh, you got it. I got it.
Yep.
Gotcha. Okay, perfect. Cool. Thank you very much uh for having me. Um, again, at my board, the full board is here this evening um in support of this. And so uh um I appreciate you having me back. At the last time uh when we met, um, you had a lot of really great questions and uh we heard you loud and clear that you wanted to hear some more feedback from the community and us to survey the community and see some stuff. And then there were some other detailed questions. And so I'm here tonight to tell you the results of the survey and um and get into some of those details and talk to you about what we're looking for. Um, so we realize uh that you can't uh fully commit tonight by, you know, having like a resolution or something like that, uh making the land swap happen. But the more information that you give us, the better for us being able to make decisions. Um, if we get a strong indication tonight that uh that that the city council is um uh in favor of uh this land swap idea and putting the uh the facility in this other spot, then when we go out and ask for money, we're going to be asking for the extra money that it takes to make this happen and we'll be representing that the, the final site will be on this and that the amenities will be of everything that's included in all of this. Pending uh a final support from the city. Um, so uh um we would like to uh be able to do that and put that out there. And so uh having um uh uh some, some uh um uh some direction from you would be helpful tonight. My little we are here map, so right now we're uh um we're shooting for a May election. Um, and so we need to have everything in, this says March twelfth, it's actually March first there that we have to have the fi- uh um uh the, the final deadline. And so we uh have a win uh meeting, special meeting on Wednesday nights to uh uh put our uh decision out there on what exactly we're going for and what the dollar amount is. And then we'll be working in the next month or so with bond council and our finance people and our uh our, our legal people to put together the, the language and to, to, to put the uh the issues on the ballot, both a levy and a bond. Still, I'll go through this quickly because you saw these slides last time, but we are looking to put a capital bond on the uh um on the ballot. Um, it will be a pool replacement with community center, um Westside Park Development, um other park development and land funds, uh Parkdale Park, trail enhancement, park shop, some maintenance equipment. This is the, the site right now, the Jackson campus, uh and you can see the different ownership of it. Um, we only own our one point three acres where the facility is there on the corner. And uh we are interested in the Collins Field and Suru to tennis court area um over there to be able to be a little bit closer to the next to the park. This is uh at the last meeting, we, we were saying that if we got some positive feedback, which we, we did get from you um that we would go out and talk to an architect and find out some better cost estimates. I've got another slide coming up that shows you this a little bit closer. Um, but uh this is uh kind of what it would look like on the site. Again, just concepts right now. Um, they call this a test of fit to see whether or not everything that we would want would fit in the area. And uh then again, um the part of this would be of course moving the Collins Field or a field over here to um uh the Westside Park that we're going to be developing and then moving the uh tennis courts up to the uh school. And those were the goals. So the, the, the other things that we talked about at the last meeting, uh uh the, the pool will not, would not have to close if we were able to do this, so we'd be able to stay open the whole time. Otherwise, if we build on the same site we're at, we're going to be closed for a year. Um, we'd be able to do some expanded parking. Um, we'd be able to do multipurpose fields instead of the single use field. Um, and then uh just the more space we've uh actually the parks board decided to add a, a gym. And so we would be able to have a full size uh gym at this facility too, if we were able to do it on this other site. We can't do that if we do on our site. They're a better layout and uh um hopefully this will line up with some of the city goals with the um uh uh police or whatever else you would like to do with the property. So a little bit more about the tennis courts. In uh the summer of twenty twenty one, um the city council here commissioned a report and heard a report from a local engineering firm, Klein and Associates uh that showed that it would be between eight hundred thousand dollars and one point five million dollars to replace the tennis courts there. Um, and that if you continue to repair them um with groundwater the way it is without making a, a lot of these repairs, then it's just going to continue to break up. And so the city council chose not to uh continue investing in those tennis courts. But uh to my knowledge, does not have a plan yet on relocation or uh money to, to put it somebody somewhere else. This would solve that. Um, I realized that the new courts would not be in city limits, but they serve the same people. They serve the city uh residents um who go out to Golden Eagle Park on a very regular basis and, and use that park. Um, and then it also would bring um the high school tennis program up there uh to um uh to the high school so that we don't have high school students. There's no bus program or anything that brings them down to the courts, so they are right driving themselves to get down here to Maestri to play um their practices and their games and so to put them up there. Uh, we're far away from getting into design and what uh lines get drawn and all of that stuff, but pickleball definitely, you guys uh that, they have a, a, a home up there at Golden Eagle already. We already have two tennis courts there. It's possible that we could be doing something with those courts as well and the area in between. There's, there's other things that, 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 that we could be doing. Also, if we are building a gym, there will be a spot where there could be some indoor uh pickleball being played uh during the winter and such at our gym during the day. Right now, I know that they use some of the gyms in the elementary schools and those are all only in the evenings. Um, but uh um you know, there's lots of possibilities uh for a lot of sports if we are able to have a gym that's not associated with the schools um for the community to use. So this is just an artist rendering of what the highs or what the courts could look like up there. That's on Double Mountain property. Um, we have uh uh met with the owner of Double Mountain uh about uh a possible lease of that property or something. And I, I used the exact uh Subaru tennis courts right there and just superimposed them at the same scale and just put them right over the top. So um, so they, they, they do fit right in there in a spot that's just a bunch of uh uh um uh, you know, scrub brush and uh Scotch broom and things like that. So it'd be a, a, a great uh thing to have there. Little bit more about the Collins Field. We had talked a little bit about the use of that field. Uh, Collins Field is a men's baseball field with ninety foot bases. It is a very underutilized size. Uh, if you look at the um uh the listings of all of the different age groups that play, it's pretty much just adult boys that play on this type of field. Uh, the girls can't play on it. It's, it's just uh once you get fourteen and over uh boys. And uh many of the leagues don't play on these fields at all. Um, the softball program, uh adult co-op softball, they, they will play on it and uh other groups, um, you know, but they're, they're the main users of it. As far as youth goes, this does not serve as many people in the community as, as, as people think. What we would replace it with would be uh multi-use fields and uh uh Megan Saunders had asked some questions about what are multi-use fields? And here's just a couple of examples of, of what those can look like, one in become a small area and one in a larger, the one on the right, actually I managed um in Redmond, Washington, that's at Perrigo Park. Two full-size soccer fields on it and then two fields. And you can tell the way that they lay out the uh the baseball diamonds. It's got uh usable or a movable basis. And so you can adjust them for multiple different types of uh of sports. We actually even had uh um movable outfield that we could bring in for little league games and things like that. So there's a lot of different things that you can do to make the fields um a, a lot more uh multi-use for lots of different things year round. Um, and so um that's what we're looking at doing uh when we build our own fields. Public safety building, um I just wanted to bring this up of, this was from uh summer of twenty twenty when uh this council was studying um the public safety uh um uh complex. Um, the pool site came in seconds um as far as the complexes go. And the, the, the main uh, one of the, the cons against it was the site. The site's primary obstacle is the timeline and lack of site control. If the site is selected, then police uh facility project would be paused indefinitely until a new parcel for pools identified. Fund secured for relocation and current sites vacated. Well, this would solve this problem. So here's another one where uh um where we already vacate the site and then you've got it already. I know that you were trying to thread that needle and get this so that you could uh do it before the uh um uh the fire uh uh bonds uh uh expired. That one already has expired, so that's not uh 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 an issue anymore, but um now it would uh free that site up, so hopefully that could move up to a higher spot. Here's kind of what it looks like on the site and I'm going to zoom in one more time. So this is what the rendering would look like. Uh, and again, just with everything here could change, but it just shows how much could be fit on that site. So could fit um another uh, I think a hundred and eighteen parking spots right there. That could be shared parking for um uh for the public safety building. If we did something like that. Could fit a gymnasium, um uh our new admin um office areas, classrooms, full set of uh of lots of different kinds of locker rooms with family changing locker rooms and exclusive changing. Multiple party rooms and then multipurpose fitness, group exercise stuff, all on one floor. The other one um is going to have to be three floors to try and fit it in our spot and we could not fit a gym on it. So this would be able to do all one floor, makes it more ADA friendly, makes it easier to manage without having to worry about staff on different floors and different people on, on different areas and such. And uh um and then just a really nice uh uh area to be able to spread all of that out to think of like a fitness room with that view of Mount Adams right through that corridor there. Um, and then uh having, you know, that little hatch during their up area, it could be like a little deck area and then where it says casual play, that's kind of where the dugouts are and such. That could be the splash pad or the splash pad could be over in Jackson Park. There's lots of different things we could do. Of course, we'd want to work with the city as we're trying to figure all that out. But uh um this, this creates a lot of really cool uh um uh use of that area instead of having a big parking lot separating um the, the Jackson Park from uh from, from a community center. Here's a little bit what the numbers look like. We had some cost estimates. The cost estimates have just been going up and up and up. And that's why we're going right now. We need to make these decisions. Because uh just our, our option five um uh, which was uh the, the, the three-story community center on our site is now a fifty million dollars. Um, that was uh um twenty-two million dollars, twenty-five million dollars um uh in twenty seventeen estimates and it's just been going up. Um, and so um to add the splash pad, the gym and then the parking and a little bit more uh infrastructure for having to move utilities and move site and everything. It's about ten million dollars more. So it would be um about sixty million dollars to be able to build on the uh um the Jackson Pike Park site. This is the uh, the survey we put together. Um, and so the city, uh we sent it out uh to you in advance to take a look at it, one, a couple of your feedback comments. One of them was that you wanted to have it sorted uh by city resident, which I thought was great. We were able to do that, but um we, what we had to do was two separate links, one link for the city residents and then one link for everybody else. And uh um for the most part, people follow that. We'll see on the very back that there's a couple of people that kind of snuck through and one or the other, but uh uh so the, hopefully you had a chance to take a look at the survey and to, to take the survey, but um uh uh we gave first it's just an overview, just kind of letting them know who we are and uh when the pool was built and, and how we were there, give them a little history lesson there. Um, and then went uh into the pool location and uh and just kind of pitched the idea of uh land swap. You asked us to add that language, so considering a land swap with the city. Um, and uh um and kind of showed them um some graphics on just what that could look like. And then uh gave that same list of considerations that uh that we've shared with you before there. And then um we went out and asked uh, asked the question. So based on the information shared, what do you think the replacement of the pool should be? And uh um on the left, you've got the city of Hood River, um uh the people that clicked that link and on the right, you've got people clicked everything else. Um, and uh by a large majority, eighty-three percent on the city's one um and eighty percent on the other one. People are saying next to Jackson Park. Um, they like the idea of the uh, the, the bigger facility um with more amenities uh closer to the park. We asked them the question of how much would you be willing to pay extra? Because we knew that it was a um uh that was going to be a, a consideration. And um people came in uh very high um uh fifty-seven percent and forty-eight percent with willing to pay an extra one hundred dollars a month. I'm happy to say that this, this, the change does not bring it up to a hundred dollars a month. Um, so we're, we're, we're well under that, but when you see the amount of people that would say um fifty and seventy-five and add, add that all up to a lot of people are, they're willing to pay for this. Of course, this is a survey monkey that went out to our uh um our email list and several community partners and, and things like that. It is not statistically valid survey. We realized that. Um, we didn't have the money to do another statistically valid survey, but uh this is what we could do with limited budget and um so, so we understand that, that there's, that you could, you could pick into the data, but with those numbers so high, I think that it's, it's uh pretty impressive.
I'm sorry, Mark.
Yep.
You, you said per month a couple of times. This says.
Per year. I am so glad that you caught me on that because three hundred dollars a month, I'm not sure I would vote for that.
Can you go back again?
Yes, yes, I'm.
Because it says
Yeah.
it's going to cost three hundred, but then fifty-seven percent of the people said I'd be willing to spend one.
Yes. So the uh, so, so this was kind of a tough one to write and we kind of rewrote it a bunch of times, but the, the bond is estimated to cost at this point three hundred dollars. How much extra would you be willing to pay to move it above the three hundred to move it to the other side? Yeah, yeah, you're right. Per year, yes, per year. We've got to say that a few times. We've gone back and forth. It's funny. We've gone back and forth on, on whether, whether or not we should say per month or per year and what would resonate more with the voters. And when we pulled it, the per year came out, but I always thought it would be the per, per month. I like to think of things with a smaller number, but um uh per year actually tested higher. So a little bit about the demographics, we wanted to keep this very simple and just ask two questions and then just kind of get into the demographics. So we knew who uh uh um who was uh, who we were talking to here. Uh, mostly uh female, um uh mostly uh in their uh uh forties to sixties. When we ask uh uh um some other questions here, uh mostly whites. This is the kind of the interesting one. Uh, everyone as in Hood River should have clicked the Hood River link. Um, but uh there were some people that clicked West Side. I don't know, they might be still a city resident and they just, even though we wrote outside city limits, they, not everybody knows the exact city borders. Um, but the other ones only added up to about uh five or six other people that must have clicked the wrong link and uh um and, and went to that one. You'll see on, on our side that we actually have um a lot of people that clicked City of Hood River resident, eighteen percent of ours that, that, that clicked in there. So uh wasn't perfect, but uh we're having people self uh identify and self-select is uh um is, is kind of a tricky thing and never will be completely perfect, but pretty close, I think. So last slide again, um uh same, same as that other one, um just asking the questions and we can have a discussion here, but we just want to talk to the council and just see how close to confident you guys feel about this. What we're looking at um is we would need to have um a very for sure solid answer in August of uh, of this year, of twenty twenty-four or so. Um, and that could be either an MOU or some sort of resolution or something like that. Uh, because that is when we're going to go out to bid for designers or sometime around there to start looking at this. Um, and when we're going to be uh um and when we start designing, we're not going to want to spend that money, that design money without knowing exactly where the pool is going to be. So um I am happy to uh um to, to hear comments and entertain any questions.
Great. So my thought would be first, let's, any questions that we have of Mark? And then how much time do you guys want to spend deliberating on this tonight? We can answer that question separately, okay? So uh first of all, any, any clarifications or questions for, of, of Mark or the, or the board members, uh Meg, Megan?
Thanks for coming, Mark. Um, sorry, still have some questions on the multi-use field, but um with moving Collins Field there is like the square footage of the multi-use field going to get increased? Or are we just adding another competitor to what I assume will already be a high demand field or like, how does that play out? So that we don't end up losing field space?
Yeah, we'll, we won't, it, it will be definitely more field space than Collins Fields. Um, if that's the question, like, is it more than two point five acres or is that?
I guess more, you know, so I, and I don't know how many fields fit in there, but if you've got one or two fields that or, you know, like what, what is equivalent to one soccer field or two soccer fields? You know, I'm aware Collins Field isn't used every night, but like you're then competing with, you know, all the soccer leagues and Frisbee and lacrosse and whatever middle school and high school sports I don't know about. Like, are we, and we already know that fields in general for the county are, are constantly come up as a need. And so are we, are we expanding or maintaining field space or are we still functionally losing some with the combination of Collins and this?
It's definitely an expanding. Yeah, uh um uh so there's different, different, uh, uh ways that you can increase field capacity and, and some of that is in scheduling and being able to put more people. And and some of that is in scheduling and being able to put more people on different types of fields and everything. So um when you say you're aware that Collins Field is underutilized, I'm not sure you know exactly how much it's underutilized. I mean, it's it's it is several, you know, probably nine, ten months a year that nobody even goes on to Collins Field. Um it says on, I think on your website that people can practice soccer, they can be reserved for soccer. I don't see, I mean, maybe once a year I see someone playing soccer out there and it's usually people that I just show up and play. Um it's not being used um uh to uh to potential. There's some things that you could probably do with it to make it a little bit better and and used more often, but it's it's really not. Also, the 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 fields are are at different seasons. And so um oftentimes uh uh you know, there's there's uh people playing, you know, baseball in the spring, lots of different at different times. So uh that's uh um uh there's there's lots of different uh um uh things with field scheduling and how you settle that up. But but for the most part, you'll have multiple people being able to play on the same field at the same time in certain configurations. If you do it baseball, it might just be baseball, but you might still be able to do soccer and some other things. Right now Collins Field is just one time, one person at a time on there. So it'll definitely be an increase in the amount of capacity, field capacity.
Okay, um and then I know you showed some schematics and that was helpful. I assume that's not set. There'd be flexibility about the layout or you know, because it certainly built schematic in the survey, because what you showed tonight showed like there was potentially some empty space that could be utilized for other shared uses or something like. What does that look like going forward? How do you see that?
A lot of that will come up during the design process. Right now, the the architects were telling us for about the kinds of amenities that we were looking at um and the square price for square footage, what it would cost. But as far as like, we start getting into like, how deep is the water going to be? What uh uh sanitation system are you going to use? Uh what sort of sports are going to be played in this multipurpose room and all that stuff, all that stuff that will be worked out during uh um during the design process? But a lot of that stuff takes a lot of public input. And that's where we, you know, uh um are going out and talking to the public about like, what are the sort of things that you're interested in? Usually right now, it's just kind of a um the the very early planning stuff of like, we want to build a building this many square foot or this is the square footage, here's what you know can be put there. We did some of that in twenty seventeen when we were doing the big pool study, but it needs to be done again. It's a different time and we need to go through and uh and and figure a lot of that stuff out. But uh um uh that's uh uh yeah, it's something we'll do another day.
All right, sorry, one more. And then like the what the sixty million dollar cost estimate, did that include um you know, whatever engineering cost estimates the city would require for that sort of development? Or did that assume the city was gonna waive those fees?
No.
Okay.
It 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 and to an extent, I don't know. Uh so I mean, yes, it all of the fees and uh um and permitting and our design and all of that stuff is all included. If the city uh um added a bunch of things like we want you to completely redo the intersection front of, you know, between eighteenth and seventeenth and things like that. Not all of that is included. So we but we don't know what those things are until we start going through um the 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 process and the law. So we don't have uh um we don't have uh there there could be some other things um that that come up. But uh uh but that that involves that 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 involves uh most of the design and permitting work. We're not making any assumptions about the city waiving things for us.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Um I I I noticed in the in the language about um the baseball field and the tennis courts, it says could. It could be moved somewhere else. It's my understanding that it's a will, right? Within the bond, okay.
Yeah, well, that was more of like me explaining like how all this would work. And if if when you guys say like, hey, we will do that, it's completely fair for you to say we will do that as long as you make plans so that these are replaced at other sites. And that's like, yeah, that's a for sure.
I mean, personally, I'd love to see those be a will.
Yeah. Uh like in the in the language when we uh put it all together, it
Could be a will, it will be a will.
Yeah.
Tim, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mark, great presentation. Thank you so much. This is just kind of like a minor question. What are your plans for decommissioning the current pool site? Um when it comes time?
Yeah, so uh we our plans would be to take it back down um uh to uh just an empty site. Um oh, we uh would um, you know, demolish the uh the the concrete hall off and um and just remove that, put it back down to kind of a a a flat field um sort of thing.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate the vision being brought. Can you please remind me, what is the current assessed value of the land where the pool is at right now?
I don't have the that information.
I think that's something that at least I would like to understand. What is the current assessed value, right? Because if we're going to, if the value of our land is more expensive, then that's something I would definitely love to figure out. Could we? How do we get a good return on investment? Not saying that this isn't important, right? But understanding what is each piece currently assessed at?
I I mean, I I I see where you're going with that and I appreciate it. I would uh push back a little and say that this is all owned by the taxpayers. And so it's public property that we're we're not negotiating um with the private developer that's putting in a shopping center or something like that. It's uh the investments I think that uh that the city is getting is the same investment that you got in nineteen eighty nine when you uh turned over the property, the one point three acres to the Parks District. We then ran a pool for the community, for our taxpayers for the next forty years and are continuing to run that pool. And so I would consider um any financial loss the city would take there as to the city being a partner and being that being your investment in this great thing that the community gets to use.
I'm not opposed and I hear where you're coming from. What I'm trying to understand is just what is it valued at? I'm not saying no. I just want to understand what what it's assessed at. And then understanding what Collins Field is assessed at, just so that we have that understanding for awareness.
Okay, thank you, Mark, so much. And we may think of more questions. Would you guys like to deliberate at this time? Looking for some head nods here about how one, okay, I got a clear nod on the left, ready to talk about this. Uh anybody want to kick it off?
Thanks, why not, everybody? I love being first. Since you presented the first time, uh I've kicked this idea around quite a bit um my own time. And I've come more and more around to being receptive and supporting this proposal. Um the current pool property, as you mentioned, the asset of that land i- in my estimation is a highly strategic asset that would be of value to the city. Uh however we choose to use it, be it a a a community safety facility or whatever. Uh and I appreciate the willingness that the Parks District has to um in integrate the uses, the existing uses of sort of tennis court and Collins Field elsewhere throughout the the park system. Uh so I would also expect that in terms of being for that could everyone in the community. So long and short of it is I am supportive of conceptually swapping properties as long as we go through and dollar I as cross all our Ts, make sure everything is um covered, all the questions are answered. Um if there are any permit charges, any uh uh road charges that have to come into play for um the heights, any uh vehicle transportation costs, that sort of stuff is accounted for. Uh conceptually, I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. I too am in conceptual support of this. Uh I think for me, uh a piece that would be really important moving forward is that there is more outreach towards those that speak Spanish to the natives here in the gorge. Because I'm certain I see a lot of them when they're out playing soccer with their families or up at Parkdale and Odell. So I'd love to see more public engagement around uh our more marginalized communities. But I do appreciate that you sent out surveys and that folks excited to see um responses from our community members that they too are uh in support. So thank you.
I I am supportive, you know, it it's a miracle that we've used baling wire and bubble gum to keep the existing facility going for as long as we have. And 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 I I applaud you guys for thinking big, you know, the call community center thing. I've always been like, yeah, that'd be great, but who's really gonna do that? And and so you you're you're giving it the college try and 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 I think that that's, I think that that's good. Um I'm I'm supportive of of moving the uh puzzle pieces around to to get the best facility for the community. So uh and and I would look forward to a really robust public process to straighten out the where is this? And where does that go and kind of thing? Cause um this is just a starting point. So 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 I'm supportive.
I mean, I still like the general idea, but I I'm still struggling with feeling nervous about it. I mean, I noticed in your presentation, the schematic of the police facility onsite doesn't account for seventeen and eighteen being moved through the site. And so I'm I'm still worried that that site is kind of a lemon um long term. And then I and I understand the time constraints and the money constraints, but you know, a survey of your email list of presumably park supporters doesn't didn't answer the question I think I had last time this came up of you know, what do city residents in general actually feel about the, not the whole proposal, which is of course important and will be on the ballot. But just specifically about, um yes, they're still in public ownership, but you know, this is three acres of city asset. The it is kind of a big deal. And yeah, so I just, I'm not sure my questions have been fully answered, but yeah, I'm I'm not ready to like try and tank it or anything. I I'd like to figure out how to get those questions answered. So.
Yeah, I'll I'll echo what I said last time. I'm really supportive of this. I think it's a great idea. Um I see what uh big uh community centers do for communities. Um I travel to other communities with my children to expand what they can do um while still using the pool. It'd be nice to do that. Um I I think, you know, like most counselors have said, I think there's some more information and some more nuance to this. But if you're looking for general support in the idea, I I think it's uh it's really innovative and a great idea and and I fully support it and uh look forward to uh seeing it built.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm too uh conceptually supportive of it. It seems like a really good idea. Uh one thing I guess a question, another question for Mark is, would like a long-term lease? Like a ninety nine year lease suffice as opposed to a full land swap?
I would, that is a question for the board, but uh um right off the bat, I think something like a ninety nine year lease sounds like it would give us what we need. That that's outlasts what we're putting on in the pool. So if that's what it would take to make it happen. It's that that sounds reasonable, but again, that's a um that's a board's decision.
Thank you, thank you, Mark. It's just so we know our options going forward.
Thanks, Tim. Other comments? I uh I had a chance to talk to Marta uh after after our last meeting, uh elected to elected. And we shit, we debriefed a little bit and I I had come into the previous meeting a little bit less uh supportive uh because of, you know, we're giving giving a big piece and getting a little piece. But more recently, I've been thinking of it as our city residents would get a pool paid for by them and other people. So it's like a huge upgrade in resource in the city. Uh I guess the other way to say that would be the people in Parkdale would pay for it, but it would be down here. So having a local pool paid for by lots of people is is a win for our residents. So that's that's where I I am at now. Since since then, Tim had raised concerns about uh water use. Um so I learned more about splash pads than I had heard before. There's re-recirculating splash pad where you have a sanitation concern. There's non-recirculating where you have a water spending concern. I mean, there's no, no, it depends on your your biome. I think to to determine which is the best way to go, but uh it seems like a really fun, fun uh resource to have. When we we moved here with little kids, having a a public pool was a priority and having a better public pool would be even better. So I'm I I didn't uh disagree much with what anybody said. It seems like we really have some some broad support here. Now, uh are are we looking for a motion tonight or is this just more informal? Abigail?
Mayor, we envision this to be uh just informal conversation because we weren't exactly sure what the Parks District needed from us at this time. Um but I will uh consult with the city attorney about what kind of action we might need. And we can consult with Mark and their attorney, Ruben Cleveland, and uh figure out, I'm assuming at the very least, you'll probably need a resolution at some point. But it might maybe they can wait till after the election, so we'll find out.
Okay, so I I feel like the slide you showed about what's the question needed answered is, did do you hear robust support? And I I would use that word. I mean, we got seven folks speaking in favor here. So I, is is this useful to you, Mark?
Yeah, it is to me. Uh I've seen head nods over here. They're they're not allowed to make a decision, but uh
Great, okay.
So then help me understand what the plan is moving forward on Parks and Rec and.
Right, so the plan would be um that uh we will put something on the ballots in this May um for uh the full uh the full thing. And and when people ask us where we're going to put it, we'll say we our plan right now is to put it at Collins Field. Um uh and uh um and put the larger facility. So we're going to be asking for the full uh sixty million. Um and uh the the larger amount um with that being the plan.
In in that vein, um so I looked at the survey and I was surprised to see that the splash pad was actually being proposed for in Jackson Park. And since we haven't discussed that, can you not include that in public engagement until you know, council has maybe actually figured that out one way or the other?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we can say a splash pad and and I mean, if if it wasn't in Jackson Park, that area back behind Collins Fields, that I was talking about the dugout and everything, it could fit right there or something like that. But I think that a splash pad is probably a good selling point, but I don't have to use the word Jackson Park.
I think in general, I mean, and this is the same as you guys apparently talked about this seven months before you came to council of talking about how you're gonna use city land before you talk to council is complicated for us.
Sort of similarly, um what do you call the current site? I think that it's TBD versus a public safety facility, because we we just don't know. I'm thinking more for your marketing staff is like, what do you show? And it's like something, something.
I I was not even gonna go there in any of our stuff. I, to me, the what what you do with the site later is up to you. Um I, the only reason that I brought up public safety was because I knew that that was what you were interested in before, but I'm not going to talk for you. And even in uh our survey, we didn't bring up uh um the uh the that public safety facility. We just had a land swap with the city. That's that's that's, we'll let you guys drive that bus.
Anything else on this topic? Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Okay, from the sublime to the sublime, from parks and rec to wastewater, two very important city things. I'll give a chance for folks to exit. Okay. Boy, I know how to clear a room. And Kevin, if you can help folks visit out outdoors, thank you.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor.
Let's take a second, we have. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff. Uh my name is Jeff Houchen. I'm the area manager for Jacobs Engineering. Uh your operations staff for your wastewater treatment facility. And uh tonight, you have in your packet our annual report. I believe it's been long, long due and coming for you. I'm not gonna bore you with all the details in it. You've probably looked at it. And if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer that. I'd like to give you a little context as to uh just kind of what we do. In the twenty two, twenty three years, we did three hundred ninety two million gallons of water through our wastewater plant. To put that in context, that is about five hundred ninety four Olympic sized swimming pools. We have brought in over thirty and a half inches of rain that affects the wastewater treatment plant and the influence flow that we have. We have applied three point six million pounds of biosolids. That is a solids product that we take out of the waste stream. It is reused as a beneficial land soil fertilizer. And one thing I'd like to note is your plant has gone seven thousand nine hundred twelve days, twenty one point six years of being safe without any reportable incidences. And that is the short and sweet of it for me. And if I could answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
Well done. Thank you. Uh, two things that came up in the coffee shop for me this week about uh there was some sort of a we had to report to DEQ something. We we put the wrong quantity of something in the something and in 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 terms of industry standards and and you do you have any, do you have any comments about about when there are uh reportable overages or whatever the right word is?
So you you your plant has a permit issued by the state in DEQ. We have to discharge our limits beneath that permit. There are times when process goes wrong and we exceed that limit, or if we have a mechanical failure and we discharge untreated sewage into the river. That's why DEQ gets involved. And if without any further specific information, I can't answer to that, but that's the reason why DEQ gets involved.
Thank you. I know at one time we were having a hard time finding locations for our our the solids to be distributed like there used to be a farmer close by and then she wasn't there anymore, something like that. Is that but it's operationally, it's it's functioning in a sustainable way?
It it is currently. That is a progressive challenge for all of our communities as EPA starts to tighten the requirements for sites, they're becoming harder and harder to get approved. And where we're going right now is we may have to go farther east to land apply. The other option is you can incinerate, you can burn it, you can give it away as a class A biosolids, or you can pay the expense and you can take to landfill. Which is not an option that we like to do, just because it's not cost effective and it's not recyclable.
Thank you. And then finally, you mentioned the like the gallons of water. And I know that in some communities, the rain infiltration into the sanitary sewer from cracked pipes is a huge problem. It's how how's our system in terms of that?
I don't have the numbers in that. I know that when we have rain, we see the influence increase in our in our plant. So it's it's a concern. It's an issue, but it's something I know that top of that, they're addressing and working on best they can.
I will I will mention, I think this might have been in the gap between your mayorships of we did an infiltration and inflow study, and I don't remember the numbers, but there is some significant inflow infiltration, especially from the older sections of town, and that's that eight to ten year plan to replace all of those like clay pipes and everything. So from Paul's first question of, you know, when we exceed the nifty's permit, um, are we, you know, cuz mechanical failures and stuff can happen, I assume at every plant, are we kind of in on par with other places for the number of times something goes wrong or um and kind of second to that, I know there's been larger plans for like planning out replacements and and improvements off the site. Um, if we aren't at industry standard, or do you feel like we're on a good path to to kind of meet that standard of, yeah, things will happen, but we've got enough backups to be feeling pretty confident.
Uh, we put together a capital improvement plan every year. We discuss that with the with Adam in his position now, and we try to identify problems that we see are coming in the future for the plant, replacing equipment that have schedule or on schedule. And uh to answer about if we're on course with the other facilities through this storm that we've had, everybody's getting close to having violations if they don't already due to the freezing, the weather, the power outages, lack of being able to get resources to your facility. I know we had to uh one of the projects that I helped manage, we are able to get people to the site. So we had some violations there. It just wasn't safe and it wasn't practical to be even get there. That is a concern. No, sir. That was another facility that I manage as the area.
So kind of big picture, though, our facility is is on par with other communities and we are we are in a decent place.
It it isn't aged aged facility, but as as we talk about, we try to replace things on schedule to prevent any big failures.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so you know, for this discussion, we're sort of sitting in our oversight role, right? At at council and and I guess my question is, given that this is an incredibly important and incredibly expensive facility, what, how how do we know that we're getting the the best performance at at the best price? Does that make sense? I mean, asking you as a contractor to say, okay, this is this is how, yeah. It doesn't need to be world class. It just needs to be really good, right?
Well, we we try to provide world class service and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but in your packet, it gives you how many years of wastewater experience this facility has, and it's close to a hundred years of total experience. And that's pretty outstanding for a wastewater treatment plant. And uh we do continual training, we we drill home safety, compliance and education as a company.
Right, so your values are to provide the best value for us, right?
Absolutely. We take great pride in what we do.
Great. And then guys.
I was wondering if you had a capital improvement plan or any uh scheduled uh capital improvements, big ticket items that you're planning on replacing over time? If you had that scheduled out, if we could see that schedule. Uh, also, another question I had was population thresholds. If we hit particular thresholds and max out in capacity in one element or another, uh what population thresholds roughly would those be? And what would what steps would we need to take in order to address those when they came up?
Uh, the first part of that, I I'm hoping to have that capital who was planted city by the end of this week. I was having it last week, but due to the ICE event, uh got pushed back a little bit. Uh, the second part of your your question gets answered in a master plan. And that is something that the city has endeavor to take on current. That will identify population growth, age of facility, all sorts of factors. And you should have that. I Adam, any idea when that's supposed to be completed? Okay, it's it's an in-depth report. It'll take a long time to complete.
Tim, that was next fiscal year. And anybody else online?
Anything else, Craig?
Well, Councilor Polson uh just asked my two questions, so I will finalize well by saying thank you for forty year partnership of protecting this valuable asset for the city and our constituents. I look forward to continuing working with you all and understand uh those preventative actions that we can take to ensure that we are protecting those assets. Thank you.
Thank you. It's uh been my privilege to be here. I started my career down in Lebanon, Oregon, and that was our facility's first contract operations. And their longest running con- contract operation till the city took him house. Your facility is now the longest running contract that Jacobs has. So so I'm proud of.
And I appreciate the information. I am uh, water is not my uh expertise, but I was, it was pretty clear and I was able to understand everything that was in here. So I appreciate that.
Thank you for that feedback.
Tim.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, not to put Adam, Adam is in the room, right?
Yes, Adam is in the room.
I'd put Adam on the spot. I'd like to hear from Adam if he has any concerns. I just say no, yes.
Thanks for the question. Uh, no, no concerns. We're currently um working with Jacobs on a uh long term contract and um to touch on the uh wastewater facility plan. Um Windsor uh engineers and Jacobs uh are currently working on um a wastewater facility plan that we've come to you guys with. Um, and then to touch on the um infiltration um or we currently budgeted eighty thousand dollars to do um research within the city, especially on the the west side for infiltration uh over um in the uh Frankton Country Club area. Um, so um yeah, working on on getting getting a handle on some of the infiltration that's coming into the plant, so we can uh focus more on our uh our industries in town.
Thank you so much, Adam.
Anything else, Tim?
Oh, Mayor.
Just want to indicate that my questions have been answered. Good, good question, questions, everyone. Thank you so much and thank you for the informative report.
Anything else? Is there any action needed by us? Okay, thanks for.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that takes us to our consent agenda. Uh, I would entertain a motion.
I'll live, we approve the consent agenda.
Group by Saunders.
I'll I'll second.
Second by Zan Miller.
You wanna make a quick statement during deliberations?
Where we on this topic?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so moved and seconded uh for the consent agenda.
I I just wanted to thank Abigail and the team for both the meeting and the discussion we had and just the kind of work that goes into that report. I mean, we we do a consent agenda thing for for, you know, all of your blood and bone and pain uh doing stuff. And 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 I just really appreciate all the stuff that goes behind doing all those things that are in that. And 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 for those of you listening, that that's a good, it's a good read in there, so.
Thank you, Mark. Other comments?
I I I think I'll I'll just echo that since you brought it up. When when people ask me, what's the city up to? I point them right to that and it's concise and it's and I love how it gets updated and you know, it's a it's a great asset uh for the community and thanks for all the work that goes into it. I agree.
Comes up from Tim. Go ahead, Abigail.
Could I make a comment, please?
Please.
Uh, first of all, thank you for those comments and thanks to the staff who work hard on on this. It's been great to give you quarterly updates. That's good checking time for us. I also wanted to note that at our Saturday meeting on January sixth, um, we talked about where I uh said, I'm hearing you that you wanna kind of keep things that are kind of in the parking lot right now, not yet uh on the work plan um uh at front of mind. So I included those on the cover memo and I hope that's okay. So yeah, so I want to make sure that you saw that that they were there. And if there were ones you thought should be there and are missing, or if I put the wrong ones there, you know, I I definitely like to get that feedback. Those are the two items that I am aware of that you were interested for maybe next year's work plan.
This morning on the radio with Mark Bailey, Abigail made a a great comment. She said the city never closes. And you know, the the front counter is open, but in in the middle of the night, our sewer system is functioning and our streets are there and our water line, you know, it's it's true. It's true. The 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 basic functions of civilization, not to get too poetic, but it's 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 necessary that those are always functioning and you know, you don't turn off the toilets at five P M or something like that. So the constancy is is no joke and good job. Okay, that takes us to uh discussion. Oh, we do need to accept this. Okay, thank you very much. So uh uh we we have moved and seconded consent agenda. We had nice, nice words. Uh, call the question all in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, chair votes, I motion passes. Thank you, Megan. Uh, that takes us to discussion items, taxi cab task force.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna bring Amy Schloppy up and we have some of our representatives from taxi cab companies here. Just want to remind you that we talked about this, you know, is that September months ago? And uh asked for a group to um, they had said they had some suggestions on things that could be done locally. And so Amy has been leading that group and she comes back today with you for a presentation. So um I made this a work session to get comments and thoughts, but um I don't know if there's an action from this or just simply that accepting that report. So I'm gonna turn it over to Amy and I'm gonna bring up her PowerPoint for her. All right, there's so many PowerPoints to choose from today. All right, there you go. Thanks, Amy.
And thank you for having me and thanks for bringing this up. Every time I come, I always have problems with us. So I appreciate it. Um.
Can you make it fair?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, again, my name is Amy Schlappi. Uh, I'm the executive director of Hood River County Transportation District, and we do business as Columbia Area Transit. Um, I have had the pleasure of working with um Hood River Taxi, uh petty cab, EV taxi and delivery, gorge taxi, gorge PDX shuttle and uh Visit Hood River as part of the informal uh taxi cab task force that was created by the city council. So thank you. Um, and I'm here to share an update of what we are working on. So together with the group, uh we have identified some opportunities uh for uh transportation in the community. Uh, so first is data collection, really understanding the demand and local ta- uh capacity for specifically taxi um sorry, uh taxi providers, but also looking at the gaps of transportation services uh that's provided by the taxi cabs, but also uh the public transit us. Um, increasing capacity uh both through internal methods and mentoring programs. Uh, marketing opportunities of what we can do with uh local businesses, hotels, bus shelters, et cetera, to spread the word of the different transportation options that are available to visitors and locals. Again, whether it's uh public transit or uh taxi cabs. Uh, also promoting local taxi services through partner websites. So for example, myself, Kat or uh Visit Hood River. Uh, also technology, uh we think that there's the opportunity to utilize technology to educate visitors and locals on transportation options available and how to use them, specifically having one spot that they can go to to look at public transit, but also taxi and other options. Uh, a taxi stand, uh being able to have one specific spot in the downtown core that's easy for and locals and visitors to find uh taxis. Uh, and then there's also a lot of confusion, as you probably know, of rideshare of and what it is and is not available currently. Um, we have received lots of reports, both on riders that use uh taxi cabs, but just in general, and I'm talking to people. I'm hearing a lot of, oh, yeah, I used Uber the other day. Um, I myself have looked up Uber and I said that I can get it in five minutes. And I didn't actually do it, but um they are showing that there is the capability within five minutes. Um, so I want to make sure you guys were aware of that. So right now, we are working on the the data collection piece. Um, the tax providers have done a great job and a lot of work uh to compile a sheet of or, you know, a survey of things that uh I think are help us understand uh the demand locally and what the taxi providers can or cannot provide. Uh, so some of the questions that the the tax providers are going to be filling out every time they get a ride, or they'll do their best to accommodate are uh when the ride was requested, how it was pressed requested via, if it was done by phone, or if it was just a random pickup um or through their website or some sort of application. Um, that data is gonna be housed by CAT, uh and we will uh report to you uh after we have been able to compile more data. Uh, in order to improve capacity, uh taxi providers have purchased more cars uh and are actively recruiting for more drivers for the spring summer season. Um, and we're working on figuring out ways that we can kind of use resources. So for example, several of my employees, um, I have let them know that they could also do some additional uh driving for these taxi companies uh when they're not working for CAT. Um, also, I talked about us utilizing technology. We have identified Move It as a potential option uh to serve as one platform that can be um advertised by different partners uh as a way for visitors and locals to find the different transportation options available to them. I'm still doing some more research on that um and how that could work. It would most likely live under CAT. And uh we would work with the providers and cities and figuring out what the financial commitment that is needed. Uh, okay, so some asks and uh one would be a taxi stand in downtown core, or at least working, the city council working with uh or asking staff to work with local taxi companies to investigate adding a taxi stand in the downtown core, a potential location that was identified is in front of the Visit Hood River uh spot. Uh, that would be a great spot for visitors who are coming to town, but also in the short term, but also in the long term, when that new hotel goes in, that could also be a really uh easy way for people to get access to to taxis easily. Um, after I'm able to get more understanding of what Move It would look like and what that financial responsibility would be, um, I would like to uh come back to the city council to to ask for financial assistance. Um, but also I would love help from the city of Hood River staff to promote that app on your different um platforms. Uh, also, and now this is an ask, but I don't necessarily know what this would look like, but since there is a lot of confusion around Uber, um if there is a way to help enforce it, the fact that it's not right now allowed by by city code. Um, I think that would be helpful. Uh, there's just a lot of concern right now that it is operating and it's not allowed. Uh, so anyways.
Yeah.
And that is all for me. Um, just a nice little plug of our Gorge Mountain Bus up here that is currently operating. Um, yeah, we like it. Yeah, we like it. Anyways, are there any questions from you all?
Thanks, Amy. Thanks. Thanks y'all for working on this. That was really the ask is like, we need to be on the road and it seems like you're being on the road to me anyway. For Move It, is the idea that you could actually schedule a ride on that app or it's just a list of phone numbers?
So it more just directs you to the phone number and it makes it easy to give them a call. There are other, and that's part of the thing that I need to look more into. There are additional services that they provide that could potentially allow you to do that, but that would require more investment and other things that I honestly don't fully understand as a.
My gut is that something where you could schedule rides is sort of what out of towners expect and I would encourage you to move in that direction and visit Hood River for dollars. For the stand, I assume that it would only need to be in the evening hours. So could we, maybe there's a loading zone opportunity that spots that aren't being used out of business hours. So.
People ride taxis in the day too, all day.
That's all I had. Thanks. Thanks for, thanks for working this. That's the big thing.
I guess this is a question for whomever is looking to employ anybody that add more cars, et cetera. Will that help expand your hours?
Absolutely. If you're, we'd love to have you participate, but we got to have you talk up on the green desk.
Yeah, please come up.
If you're willing to say anything, come on up. My name's Mark from Gorge PDX Shuttle and yes, the answer is to have two cars operating, to have two or more drivers available to be accommodating the different hours that we need. We get regular calls for people wanting to go to the airport at 3:00 AM, which I'm not able to accommodate right now. Thank you.
And I guess, I guess while you've answered, what about the other providers that are here? Would that help you expand your hours? And what hours would they expand to? The question specifically is if you were, if you're hiring more people and adding more taxi cabs, if you're expanding hours and if yes, what hours would you expand to?
Well, if you had more drivers, ultimately at nighttime, you need somebody on till like 2:00 in the morning. After that point, you know, it's like, it's really not worth keeping anybody on, you know? Most of the bars close at 2:00 at night and you know, there's still people staggering around at 2:00. But unfortunately, a lot of the people that are out at the bars and stuff, they don't use taxis. You know, they, they either are walking or you know, depending on their own means to get somewhere else. And I think that's more of the issue and the problem than anything. We need to make people more aware that there are options that they can use, that there are rides that can be had, you know, instead of just trying to park two blocks from the bar and sneak around and try to jet out when the cop's not looking. You know, that's the issue that we have now.
If I may add just one thing too, I think that's where the data, sorry, the data collection would be very helpful. By having that data of understanding where, when rides are rejected, then the providers can take that information and they can make sure they have the data that's proving when they need extra drivers or if they need extra vehicles or whatnot. And if I may also add one additional thing that I forgot to mention. A while back, I had come to you letting you know that I had received a grant from ODOT that would work with a taxi voucher program. There are some issues with finalizing that agreement on ODOT's end, but I am working with them and we are hoping to have an update in the next month or so on that. And that would allow us to do some additional marketing, press release, et cetera, et cetera, to help market the transportation options.
Regarding the enforcement, comment on Uber? Besides like that anecdotal I went on and I saw that there's somebody available, do you have any more evidence of that, that it's happening?
So we have several riders just tonight. I heard from Gordon that someone took an Uber from, was it Red Carpet?
I got one on my phone right now. A guy called Uber because I was coming back from the airport and right at 12.
Gordon, I'm sorry.
I was coming back from the airport right about 12 o'clock and he didn't want to wait and so he texted me that, oh, I got an Uber. So they are here actively working, both Uber and Lyft, so.
I want to understand that he got an Uber from Portland Airport.
No, he got an Uber from the red carpet.
Got it. Thank you.
And you can get an Uber anytime of the day or night from the Best Western, from the downtown Hood River Hotel, from any of the hotels.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it would be really interesting to see if that's true and is a big issue, you know? But yeah, I mean, I could go on Uber right now and hit five or see five minutes and hit yes and they, it may not be accepted. So it's, you know, I don't know what we would do to do that, but it's you know what I mean? That, so it'd be interesting to probe a little bit more there. That's it for now.
Thank you.
Amy, thank you for leading these efforts. Really appreciate you coordinating with everyone else just to give us this input. This is really important to ensure that the safety of our constituents is okay. I also recognize that folks are adults and they make their own decisions and that we can't force anyone to tap into something that they don't want to. Similar concerns or follow up as Counselor Stepinia would love to understand what is currently being operated here within the city. Have chatted with Abigail about just a couple constituents that have reached out and said similar things or sent screenshots of Uber being here and would love to continue moving these efforts forward. Please let us know how we can help you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Megan.
I actually think I have a question for the rest of council. Obviously, I wasn't here in September when this came up. I did watch the whole meeting, but I was a little unclear from the rest of you of like, what is our goal or metric for success for this group? It's great. They're coming together and building capacity and expanding service. That's obviously positive momentum and I love seeing it, but I knowing there's other folks that have been really, you know, the ones that brought this to council and knowing, you know, like Gladys is abstaining from certain votes because of this, like, when do we say that this has succeeded or we need to do something else?
I'm happy to do that. Yeah, that's a great question, Counselor Saunders. And I was chatting with Abigail about this, that for me, in order for it to be successful is that we're reducing DUIs that are happening here in town, that we are expanding access past 6:00 and then it's not just two or three providers, that it's a variety of providers. I've heard, you know, some of the comments around we're out and about later in the evening and folks still aren't tapping into that. And I respectfully disagree with some of those comments, just because I've had individuals that have reached out to me and said, "Hey, I'm trying to call. I can't, you know, I have to wait." And so I I feel or that folks are reaching out and that there isn't enough access after 6:00 and on the weekends. And I would like to see more specific of X amount of cars are being purchased means X amount of drivers that can take X amount of people. And then for me, and just for me personally, an area that I would absolutely see successful impacts is reducing those DUIs.
Yeah, I mean, I initially brought this up in council call some months ago, just because of a lot of questions from local business owners and constituents. And as Counselor Rivera said, more about the evening hours, et cetera. You know, I, it's, 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 it's interesting or it would be interesting to know if we had a taxi stand, for example. You know, I'd like to hear, we've been out there and we've expanded hours and there's just no people there, right? It's, there's no, there's no demand. You know, it's, it's also difficult, you know, to sort of combat this. What was the name of it? Move It, right? Like, so, you know, having signs downtown and working with Visit Hood River and really having to educate the public and educating, putting, putting signs up at hotels, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I feel like there'd be a lot of effort there, but it's like, until we do that, we're not going to really know, right? Right now, if I went and asked people, you know, you know, what do you, what do you think the state of getting a taxi at, you know, one in the morning is, and I would agree with, with Counselor Rivera, that people are saying not good. So until we do some of these sorts of things, you know, from, from your perspective, you're not going to be able to really understand if people are, if it's required or not, because no one's really out there doing that at those hours. So it's kind of a chicken or the egg thing. So I guess my question for everybody would be, you know, you know, what do you think the best way to collect that data is if certain things are done and certain changes are made? You know, the last thing we want to do is tell you to go do something that is going to lose you money because you're, there's no one to ride out there. So in your opinion, do you think that the measures that you've outlined to us would actually increase ridership in the evening and it'd be worth your time?
We'd love to hear from anybody and please come up.
So I designed the data collection and it, it's not just for rides, it's for contact with us. So I, every call, every text that comes in, every contact, I'm recording it and showing the outcome, whether we could meet the ride, we couldn't, or they chose to do something else. So it's a pretty robust data form. Not everything is required to submit it because we didn't want to burden ourselves because it's, it's quite adding a lot to our workload is recording every contact, especially even this is in winter time. I've been testing out for the last couple of months. I'm keeping up all right and getting better at it, but summer hits, it's going to be really hard, but we're going to, I'm committed, at least personally, to do our best to collect all the contact information. So things I couldn't do, I'll let, it'll be recorded. I couldn't do this. I didn't have enough drivers. You know, or it was too, it was outside of my service time. We didn't, you know, things like that. So I'm trying to provide you and I do it myself and I'm hoping that other providers will do it as well. We don't have Jason here, unfortunately, and he hasn't been participating at all in our, in our group, which is a little bit of a disappointment for me personally, because he doesn't, it's not as worrisome for him, the consequences, I feel. But I think we'll have good data. I will give you very good data throughout the year and hopefully that'll make it clear for us to plan our, where to put our resources, both vehicles and personnel where they're needed. But also for you to see that we are 90% of the time meeting or 95% of the time meeting people's demands. And so you can, there's some data that we, I know you guys are very interested in data. I could hear your previous discussions and I'm going to try my very best to provide that. And we recognize that marketing and education are huge and you know, we do it individually. We have websites, but I think we need more of a global push because not everyone can find us or have the resources, it's not right in their face. So I'm really excited about the voucher program. I think that's going to allow us to really spread the word. And then working with Kadia at Visit Hood River, we have channels and near assistance as well to really get the word out. And then having access to drivers, I'm working with Nextdoor, we're trying to do mentorship to bring other people into the space. More taxi drivers, maybe hopefully get someone like we had Yellow Cab, we had Enrique up until about five or six years ago, somewhere in the standard community to, to come in to provide more resource. Because we can't be here there all the time or we're trying to cover our bases, but again, and to your point, Doug, I don't want to put out too much effort or money for something that there isn't a great need. And also recognize that I don't know if someone could, I gotta, you know, get calls at 3:00 in the morning or 4:00 in the morning. Can, do I keep myself up? Or someone else on staff or that one call once a week at 4:00 in the morning? But you'll see in my data that every time someone calls at 4:00 in the morning, you guys will know about it. Well, that we couldn't meet it or what's going on and we can see, see where we need to improve with coverage. I put a lot of energy into this data form. I think, we don't have a picture of it here, but we're willing to share it with you. Oh, maybe we should do that. So you can see all the data that we're collecting on each contact or ride.
Yeah, thanks. That would be really helpful. Because I think in the sphere of what we're doing here, we're trying to, we're trying to buck the trend of what's going on out there and Lyft and Uber are kind of where things are at and, but we want to make sure that you're able to, you know, to your point, have a thriving business, your community members that live here, et cetera. You know, the gig economy is not great for the bottom line for a lot of Americans. So you know, we understand all of that, but we also, you know, if it's done right, you know, we're expanding your ridership, you're making more money, et cetera. You've got a larger business, but my major concerns are just, you know, the city needs to give us a parking space, the city needs to subsidize the app, the city, the city needs to combat the problem. And you know, I think that's a discussion for us to have later when we know what that, those price tags are and what the city's role in it is. But you know, I think marketing, ridership, encouraging that, that's, that's the responsibility of not just the city, but you know, you as business owners and et cetera, et cetera. But you know, I mean, we're, we're trying, I think I can speak for myself. You know, I'm really interested in finding a way to make this work so that, you know, we're not just, you know, inviting large corporations in that aren't community members in.
Yeah, we spoke about that before, but I want to move forward with the solutions, you know? Data collection, apps, marketing, education, expanding our capacities. That's what we're been working on in our taxi group. We're meeting every few weeks and we're, I'm very solution oriented. I know that if your constituents don't feel like we always meet their expectations, so we're going to try to raise our game and that's, see what we can do during this coming year. And I appreciate your understanding and patience with us while we, while we do that.
So I think to that point and to your point earlier, just for expectations for us, when is the next check-in that you would like to see data? Help me.
Yeah. Yeah. So at our last meeting, we said, "Come back in three months. Help us understand a plan." I think you have somewhat of a plan with a little bit more time for more specifics. I would welcome and welcome my peers' perspective on maybe extending it to another three months or something along those lines so that you can have more time. I also recognize that realistically, this is, this hasn't been done before and so we have to understand the need. We have to build a process in order to be able to have outcomes that are achieved and that that will realistically take time. And appreciate you wanting to, helping lead these efforts, right? And how do we get Visit Hood River? How do we pool all of our dollars so that it's not just the city that is fiscally responsible for these efforts? We just want to make sure that there's a well-maintained and safe community, folks.
I guess, you know, to the timeline end, it seems like coming back to talk through some of the implementation specifics is whenever you guys are ready, but I'm wondering from a data collection or the community engagement and like three months is pretty short and we're not even, you know, we would still not even be in the tourist season really or just starting it. And so I'm not sure that's a good gauge of like, what is the need during the summer? Or how well have we actually gotten the word out about new things if things have only been around for a month or whatever, you know, people aren't going to pick up an app immediately. So you know, maybe it's a really quick check-in in three months, but I could see like six months or something being much more realistic for showing actual, you know, having good data sets and showing, you know, more significant progress from my end, but that's.
Great.
Then Doug. I'd like to temper council's expectations of collecting data during the summer. They're going to be very busy throughout the summer. It's going to be difficult during that time of year to do that at the same time when it's an all hands on deck situation, just to get the work done. Hopefully they can still get some data, but temper summer expectations, just because it's going to be busy. Regarding the ask for a space downtown, a dedicated space, I would encourage council to consider it. Fixed bus routes have defined stops that people know to go to, to catch the bus. If we don't have a defined place that people can define, catch a rideshare, they are wherever and just trying to hail, hail cabs or whatnot. If they go to a defined space and the taxi companies go there, once they're done dropping off a client, then it's easier to arrange a ride. They may not necessarily have to be on the phone or on the app in order to arrange a ride. And then beyond that, regarding the other asks. And then, uh, beyond that, regarding the other asks, I would just like to see, uh, them more flashed out, uh, the different features that are available with the app. Um, UI, user experience, if it's easy for everyone to use bilingual, et cetera, et cetera. Um, or if it just, uh, adjusts, if somebody has a setting on their phone, they can change it to whatever language they want. That's matched with their iPhone. Cool. And then any other, um, uh, expectations or asks that person that we need from it.
That's good. Thank you very much.
I mean, one thing being that, you know, we definitely need to see what happens in the summer. To be really able to understand this in full, uh, two things, you know, number one, um, uh, I guess one thing, can something be done in the interim? You know, whether it's a poster that you can hang up at a bar or whatever, um, that, that you can collaborate on. I, I mean, it's, it's marketing for your business. I feel like, you know, uh, and if there's any reluctance from the downtown business district or Visit Hood River or anything, please let us know. Um, but I, I think it'd be great. I know there's, there's informally ways that, that, you know, probably the red carpet and other places, you know, to get, get a card or something like that. But can we put it in somebody's face, you know, so that when they're leaving the bar, they see right there, oh, there's a big poster right there. This is how I can get home. I mean, that can't be too expensive to do in the interim. I, I kind of feel is, what are your thoughts on that?
Honestly, I think for, for me, um, it's resources, um, I just staff resources. I, I will continue to working with this, uh, this team task force to do that. Um, but I think it's just, yeah, being able to have the, the staff resources to do that. While in theory a poster is, you know, quick, no problem. Let's do it. You, you need to flush it out, right? And I think in theory, if we're going to do it right, we, we need to do it right, right? So probably have been helped with our, um, designer to help create the poster and make sure that it's meeting all the needs that it can be translated into Spanish, that it's, um, easy to understand. It's, um, I, I think that's important. Um, but yeah, no, I, I understand in theory it should be, should be easy to do, right?
Well, I wouldn't say easy, you know, um, I have to market things that I do. Like I, I'm in a band and we have to go hang posters and that kind of stuff. They get covered up and sometimes it's not busy downtown and whatever. Like there's a million things to, to do, but I just kind of feel like if I went back to the constituents, the people that have been talking to me about their concern with this and said, well, we're going to collect data in a year, we'll get back to you. They're going to say, well, aren't you going to do anything in the interim? Um, so I, I just kind of feel like if they're what, but to Megan's point, like three months from now is, it's not a good check-in because there's probably not a lot of data collected and et cetera, et cetera. But I, I would just would like to hear something in some sort of interim plan until, you know, we get to the next year. Um, so you know, I'll, I'll, I'll just say that as a comment and I'm not expecting to answer anything, but that, that would be my concern.
I think there's a lot that can take place now around just the marketing component. But again, I don't want to necessarily feel like I'm telling you guys exactly how to do this, but Visit Hood River receives specific city dollars, right? So you can use that. If, if you are not having a redemption for your assessments, then there are dollars that you can associate. It's a $5 if you complete this. If you do it through a job form, that's a lot faster than like having to fill each question out or a piece of paper. So there's definitely strategic ways to market and then making sure that this is shared community-wide. If we'd be happy to help on those efforts, however possible. This is really important. And so I'm, I'm more than happy to help, um, outside of when I'm sitting here to make this successful around the collaboration with other partners, ensuring that surveys are being completed. I agree that data collection is important here, but we know what the issue is, is that there isn't rides after six o'clock and there aren't, there isn't enough access after six o'clock and there isn't enough access on the weekends. And that's, that's the issue, right? And that with, with you all now, that's, that's not enough. And I say this to you sir, because that's what folks are contacting me about, right? So I know that we're going to disagree on that. But this is what folks are contacting me about the issue of there isn't rides past six o'clock and on the weekends.
I disagree.
I'm sorry, Gordon, Gordon, I can't have you do that.
I disagree hardly from six o'clock to one o'clock in the morning. There's more rides available than any other time of the day.
And I understand that and I accept, uh, I accept it. I'm simply stating what my constituents are mentioning to me that the issue is.
My read of this is that if by summer, there was some communication and outreach kind of thing going on and you're continuing to collect data, then that's getting to, you know, the good points that are brought up here, you know, having the app by the summer is probably maybe that's a, a step too far. Maybe it isn't. Um, keep, I would encourage you to keep, keep working on these things. You know, you know, pull in Visit Hood River. Talk to Abigail about making, once you, once there is a package of stuff to get the word out about, we can do that. We, we want you to be successful. Um, I think that's the bottom line and that means getting out, getting the word out there. Um, so. Bye. Go teams.
All right. Understood. So what I'm, just to clarify, I'm hearing getting the marketing out, making sure that we have a plan for the outreach and doing what we can as a task force to make sure that there is a cohesive message and people know where to go. And work on the data collection and come back in three months. Is that, when am I saying, or six months for data collection?
Again, I'm going to caution you guys that collecting data in the summer for these folks who are doing it on their own time is going to be difficult.
What's your pleasure, people?
I'd say an update to Abigail in three months saying, here's what the marketing thing is, and she can keep us informed of that. And then, then we'll all see stuff as we get into the busy season. That, that would be my, my point.
Yeah, I'll just say I agree with Mark. Yeah.
Great. Head nods on that. Clear?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Great. Thanks for being here, you guys. Appreciate you. All right. We're going to take a break and then we're going to hear about a development code audit. Take it away.
Thank you, uh, Mayor and Councilors. Uh, yeah, we're going to talk a little bit about the code audit and update process and, uh, inspired by, uh, winter weather and, and a great amount of football. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna main commentary and color, color commentary this, um, this to you. This is one of your critical projects. Uh, we've been before you in July, uh, in September, and then, uh, last in December to speak about uh, this code, uh, which is now being contemplated for funding from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, uh, through its technical assistance grants. What you have before you tonight is, um, really it's been taken from the charter, the highest level in, uh, goal setting of this plan through, um, an, uh, a, a grant application that intended to articulate some of the issues we have and now, um, is being distilled into, into 14 pages of scope. Uh, the intent of this scope is to have breakdown tasks that we hope to accomplish and really get our arms around. How does this project break down over two phases over approximately 18 months? So Kevin has, uh, gone through and kind of has a, an outline of a number of the points that we'd like to raise. This is also an opportunity that we have asked, we ask you all to make sure that we are getting this right. This is your code project. We are trying to make sure the scope reflects your intention for this project. And if there are amendments or things that we've missed, overlooked, uh, things that need to be clarified, uh, we'd like to make sure that before we kick off with consultant and with the state, that we have those incorporated in the scope. I think we could just end it right there. I, there, there's some more salient points for not only you, but also those in the audience who want to know what we're up to. Uh, we want to make sure that they have an idea of what, where, where this project has come from and where we're going with it.
Good. Carry on.
All right. So I'm going to run through some bullets for you. Again, uh, this is in your 23, 24 work plan. Uh, we presented to you a draft charter in July. A copy is in your packet on pages 102, 103. When we talked about that in July, we got some direction from you on the proposed scope of work, including the extended public engagement um, and anticipated outcomes. After that discussion, we did start that process, this working with DLCD in the grant opportunity. And in September, the city was awarded that housing planning assistance grant. Um, we talked about that again in December and at that time, we learned that DLCD had a relationship with a number of consulting firms and we, uh, wanted to work with MIG, a firm we've worked with in the past. And we've since moved forward, uh, with that relationship. We have worked with MIG on putting together the scope of work that is in your packet right now. We've gone back and forth on that and a couple of times, of course, we're looking for some feedback from you. Um, this is for both phase one, the code audit and phase two, the code update. You've got budget estimates for each, each phase and those are in your packet on pages 87 to 101. Uh, we do of course anticipate refinements to phase two. If you took a look at that, it's a little bit rough. Um, but that refinement is expected to occur after we complete the phase one audit portion of the project. Uh, you may also have some comments for us tonight. We expect, uh, there may be some revisions to phase one to address your, uh, concerns. So upon finalization of that scope of work for phase one, a contract will be signed between DLCD and contractor MIG. Then the city expects to execute a non-cost IGA with DLCD to confirm city participation in the project. Um, as explained in the cover sheet on pages 85 to 86 of the packet, we did anticipate that that DLCD grant is going to be valued at a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and for work with MIG, including all of the phase one and a portion of phase two. Last Friday on the 19th, DLCD informed us that due to state funding constraints, funding is available only for the phase one code audit from DLCD at this time. They're going to be, uh, in the short session working with the legislature. There's a possibility we will see funding come through to help us with phase two uh, as a part of Senate Bill 1537. So with, uh, in terms of prioritization, uh, the budget for this year should remain un, uh, unimpacted. We've budgeted sufficient funds to take on all the project work that will occur within, uh, within this budget cycle.
Within this budget cycle. The good news is the legislative session is a short session, so DLCD. Should have an idea whether they have the balance of funds available for us by the time we get to. The budget. So we'll know at that point whether we need to budget for the next fiscal year. A certain amount of funds or whether we should anticipate and likely can anticipate additional state funds to complete the project.
That scope of work for phase one is in your packet on pages eighty-seven to ninety-three. In phase one, the consultant MIG will conduct up to ten one-on-one. Or small group meetings or briefings with stakeholder groups and their representatives. These are folks we're looking to have got some experience using the code. And who may be impacted by changes to it. And that will include a work session with the city's planning commission. We've also got a meeting scoped with Spanish speakers in the community. It's expected to be organized, facilitated by a third party such as the next door. Staff will establish a project webpage, of course, to provide information about the code audit process. And expected to include information in English and Spanish. You'll see in your packet, it alludes to or allow for convenient translation. That's just recognizing today, we don't translate every page on the city's website. And so the consultant was, that's how we framed it in the scope at the moment. In any case, we anticipate monthly updates to that website. Using that website to allow folks to submit comments and ask questions. Of course, using our social media platforms at the city to to push. And address, you know, milestones, opportunities for engagement. As a part of that phase one pro- process, MIG is going to prepare a community engagement plan. For phase two. And MIG will be providing a diversity, equity, and inclusion assessment. This is intended to assess how the code audit and the subsequent code update process will address equity issues and outcomes associated with evaluating and updating the development code. We'll also schedule a work session with the city council to review and comment on the results of this code audit. Following a council work session, we'll make some additional revisions, those findings, and. You'll see a report prepared by MIG at that time with those findings. Final tasks in phase one include an initial preparation of the code update recommendations. This is going to summarize recommended updates to the development code, address code audit findings, identify the types of changes that are needed to specific code changes. And we'll do a second city council work session, be able to review those, get your recommendations and. Incorporate those into a final code update report by MIG for use in phase two. So that overall process for phase one is expected to take about seven months. And we think this addresses what we heard from you at our last couple of meetings and what we see in the code audit. But of course, we're interested in any feedback. That you've got for us tonight on phase one. And then I'll move into phase two. I'll pause here and see if you've got any comments.
Thank you. Great. Comments or questions about the so far? Go ahead, class.
Gentlemen, the football and snow, I think, did, did you all well? This is really clear. I also understand that there's a lot we may not understand and that we will understand along the way. I appreciate all the specific input on. Time that we'll have an opportunity to give feedback. I love how clear you are around your stakeholders that you're trying to engage, your timelines, I mean, your goals. The risks that are potentially associated. I think you've done a wonderful job in presenting, and I appreciate you all taking those points that we discussed at our previous meeting.
Very.
I agree with Gladys. I, I think I'm going to constantly have the problem of what isn't, isn't out of scope. But that's going to be for the next two years. I did want to just touch on the, you know, Spanish translation of the website of. Is, is it, can, how much would it add in cost to make sure that these pages are translated? If we're going to be reaching out to Spanish speaking folks as part of this, that seems like a critical piece of the outreach.
From my perspective, Councilor Saunders, if that's what the council wants to see, we'll get it done.
Then I forgot to mention. So I was curious just around that because now, for example, on a. I don't know if I can mention the brand, but there's a brand of software out there that when you pull it up on your computer, it'll read it to you. So it's called Read Aloud. And I wonder just that, right? So a lot of the times. Maybe our community members might not be able to read. I don't know if this is actually a realistic or, you know, achievable, but is there something that would actually read aloud? Instead of an individual trying to print something out that they may have access in that sense. So I just wanted to bring that up since. Councilor Saunders refreshed my memory about a potential read aloud, and it could be both in English and in Spanish.
Well, not to the, to answer the read aloud question, because I have no idea. But our website has the auto translate button. It's in, so everything in the website can be translated just by clicking from. English to Spanish. However, it's only as good as, as Google Translate. So some of it, you know, and the, the challenge with a lot of the work that we're doing is. It's, we always try to be plain language. However, it is mixed with. With planning jarg- yeah, planning jargon, legalese. So we get concerned often about plain, more about plain language and less about. Just pure translation. I mean, a lot of times we have to translate from. Subject matter to plain language. So we do have, we do have translation on all the content that will go on the website. If there's specific stuff and product that needs to go, I think that's the stuff that we start to recognize, like. We don't want to do everything for the sake of doing everything and have it just. Be wasted effort. There are certain subject matters that, like, right, this is important, and we try to hone in on those things that people really. Care about, both in English and in Spanish. So I don't really have an articulated dollar amount because it's. Trying to figure out what, what, what is there? Are we trying to figure?
This is helpful to understand of like, okay, there is the toggle option, but so maybe putting some effort into making sure. And maybe not just on the toggle, but making sure on like the, the homepage and the project summary and very clear direction on how to find out more and contact. Appropriate staff like that is actually translated into Spanish that is correct. And like has been vetted by a translator. And then, yeah, I, I imagine some of the technical stuff.
We'll probably have a lot of that in-house, like just as a virtue of, it's your, not this project, but just as any project, we'll do newsletter, we'll do those. This is not going to be conspicuously absent from our general communication. It's a critical project. We expect it to. Our, our critical project communicator to help make sure that, that information is there. They've gone home, so we, we're just assigned work.
To the toggle translate point, I think it's important for us to all keep in mind that the, the auto translate function, I'm sure the AI is getting better and better, but my friends in the business tell me. That those auto translates often lose the benefit of, you said, plain language sort of in a. Planning lingo term, but there's actually a, a, a sort of defined idea of plain language to make sure it's accessible to many people. And the point here is that the auto translates often lose that benefit. So it's at eighth grade level in English, and you click the button and it goes into Spanish at twelfth grade level. So then you've lost the access. So. Being honorable and precise and professional about our translation needs is really important.
Personal experience in there. I mean, as, as a non-native Dutch speaker living abroad, yeah, I mean, anytime I had to go. You know, look at a, at a document regarding immigration and all those sorts of things, like those weren't necessarily translated into a, a level that was then brought into Google Translate, et cetera. So I appreciate you, you know, it's, it is, it is a challenge to be able to put it into plain language enough. Because then it could be translated, but, but to your point, it all also is important for people to understand in, in, in English as well. So it's, it's a challenge. I recognize that.
So a, all, all this is good stuff, but the, the people that use the development code is a small community and, and I can't tell in here, I mean, the, the, on page eighty-eight, the. The goals bullets are great and the, but, but it seems to me like if, if you're going to have ten meetings, seven of them should be with the developer community. And the rest should be with the rest. How are we focusing on the people that are going to be using the development? Code to, to make sure that those are the people that we're listening to extra careful.
Well, I think that's part of the, the challenge is, you know, there, the, your Spanish speaking community is probably not the most. Impactful by way of code users. However, they probably have the least amount of access. So we, we have an equity issue of most likely in the time it took, they're. They probably have never had an opportunity to move the code. They may not even know that it impacts their lives or that they have opportunities. So. By loading it to the developer, who are the code users, I know what I'm going to get, I'm going to get a, a single point in agenda. By spreading it to those of different interests, such as maybe even Joel or Kenny LePointe, they may not be code users. However, the outcome of the code impacts them or. Or, or it's not, may not be the users. It's also the stakeholders, the people whose lives will be influenced by, by the code. I think we want to. We want to broaden that.
I mean, we, we want the code to result in the housing types that we desire, and I think that that's clear. And I think that some of your bullets in here are. You know, clear and objective path for approval, but, but, um, those are, the, these are all great things. And, and I don't mind that the end residents. Be told about it, but I, I mean, me, for example, and I just went through the process, I, I don't know that I. I would bail quite quickly. Like, okay, is this, is this getting what I want? Yes. Okay. And then I'm, then I'm done. Does that, does that make sense that? I think that we could spend a lot of effort asking people that don't give a who.
Yeah. Well, I also think the, we want to make sure that the, the house, you mentioned the housing and outcomes that we want. Aren't necessarily always a single perspective. Eliminating all the rules and making it the fastest pass that yes, you know, the housing and outcome in the community and livability are all born in the cop plan. And not all those are. Always, there's tension there. You know, the amount of amenities. Certain opportunities to speak to rules, they may not be in a developer's interest. We may have community interest of, yeah, we want, your code says you're going to give the community. An opportunity to have input and have influence on these projects at every step. That's empowerment of the community. However. That has tension when it comes to you get an opportunity to participate. That can make a, a, that can make a review time longer. And so we have, we have these counter. Forces that different stakeholders may have. Participation and efficiency and expedited reviews, they can kind of. They can butt heads. So how do, we're going to have to strike a balance.
So the goal of phase one is to shine some light on that, right?
Yes.
Cool.
So to, to Mark's thing, I, I just, I do want to push back in that, you know, if we're talking about equity, the, the. Small group of developers we have now may not be all of the developers we could have in the future if we're actually expanding access to this code. And the flip side of that of, of course, we have a very small group that do larger developments, but. Ideally, you know, we've done some of this with ADUs and stuff, but if we're doing a code that is easier to use and more accessible. It's also individual homeowners, which very much includes our full breadth of community. That could be doing, oh, that's the ADU in the backyard or the, you know, I've got, I can able to subdivide into a duplex or. You know, just add in addition to the house and understand it better. That I do want to make sure we are not just aiming at the same, you know, ten developers. That are critical, and I'm sure we will be talking to, but.
I, I hope we are talking to the bigger set of developers, the future. Future development environment, uh, community, not, not limited to ten people that are, you know, a little pond.
And addressing the barriers in this code now could get us to that point because very well said, Megan, I echo all of your sentiment. If, if you make it so simple that those who may not have an opportunity, even they could navigate it, right? Like. Make it so simple that a fifth grader would be able to understand it. That's. That's easy, right? Everyone can understand that a. What the process is equally. And so I, I. Continue to commend the efforts of staff on being very intentional to make sure that we have. Diverse lenses setting eyes on this. At the end of the day, we will still have decision-making. Yeah, let's continue to be equitable.
One, one group that doesn't show up in here and I'm, I'm wondering about is, you know, you have a, a local core builders group, developer group that, that is intended to be engaged. We haven't mentioned anyone outside. So like, uh, outside developer group, meaning, uh, do you have a Portland, a Bend, a larger area? Who may be doing different products? And I mentioned that specifically in the multifamily world. Multifamily is a really specific group. It's a different, for the most part, it's different. Would, and part of this meeting is to make sure we were honing in on your stakeholder group that, that we've kind of identified. Do you think? Would it be worth our time or consultant's time to, to, to dive into a, a larger developer pool?
Thoughts? Two thumbs over here?
That seems reasonable to bring in other thoughts.
That is not a nod out of Grant. So, yeah, we got, we got a quorum on that.
I, I put on a lot of value with that too, because, you know, a lot of times we can analyze our code and a lot of our subject matter experts. And on a local level only know our code. So I think oftentimes looking at it in context of what is the outside world doing, you know, best management or. You don't have this. Don't put it in there because we deal with it in Clark, Clark County, and it makes a mess, or. We deal with this with Washington County and it always trips us up. Or here's something that Washington County or. Beaverton do that is a great business practice that you should import. Those are, those things are oftentimes when we're, when we're so fixed on what our code does well or not well. That it's important to bring those, those perspectives in as well.
Other comments?
So easy, go commercial.
Great. Thanks you guys for all this hard work. I'm so excited that the state's helping us pay for it.
Got a little more to show here. Can I touch, touch on the second phase? So you'll see some information about phase two.
Hold on, excuse me, just a second. Are we okay over there, Haley? There's something funny happening on the screen. Set up professionally. It's, it's advertising professional mode in audio settings. Okay, good. Thank you. Sorry. Carry on, phase two.
Thank you, Mayor. You'll see pages ninety-four to one on one of tonight's packet, discussion about phase two. You're going to see some duplicative language in the phase two section, and that's really indicating that we're building on work from phase one. As we go through various iterations of the code update. Also, as a part of phase two, MIG will be updating the community engagement plan based on the final results of phase one. Further discussions with council about goals and needed engagement activities. That updated engagement plan is expected to describe the objectives, audiences, message, activities. Also include a timeline, roles and responsibilities for conducting specific activities. Excuse me. The engagement plan is going to reflect analysis and findings from the phase one DEI assessment. And we do expect to have two community scale meetings as a part of the, the project as well. So over the course of about four months, MIG expects to draft code amendments. In approximately four batches or modules, and you'll see references to modules in the scope there. For budgeting purposes, we assumed, assumed four modules, kind of breaking things up into four pieces, but. That, that may change as we get through phase one. An initial module, for example, could be changes to code definitions and allowed uses. The second module could address site design development and development standards. Third might address procedural requirements, opportunities for efficiencies. A fourth might include changes to the overall development code format and its organization, including use of graphics to make it easier for folks to read and use. We expect four briefings with the planning commission during this task to provide updates. On the, the process and summarize the initial recommendations at a high level. And a work session also scheduled with the city council to review and discuss an initial set of recommendations. After that. Review is done, we'll start to see some draft code amendments, more work with stakeholders, the planning commission. And we will see a revised set of recommendations from MIG. We'll also complete that DEI assessment that they start in phase one. Identifying how these code update and the, the overall process has addressed equity issues and outcomes associated with this project. Get back to another work session with the, the planning commission, provide an update on the code changes at a high level. Changes that have been made along the way. Another work session with the city council to review the same. Hear the feedback that you get from the planning commission and the public up through that stage. And then we'll see a final set of draft code recommendations from MIG before we initiate a separate process, an adoption process, legislative process. an adoption process, legislative process. So overall, we're expecting phase two to take about ten months if things go as expected. Any questions on phase two? Again, we, we, we expect some refinements to this, uh.
Phase one is going to drive a lot of phase two, right? Um, I have two other questions. One is, does this touch the engineering standards at all or, or is that, that's outside?
Yeah, engineering standards, separate document, uh, shouldn't say absolutely not. We can talk to the engineering department, but this is title sixteen to seventeen of the.
Piece of the same development ecosystem, I guess. Uh, and then similarly, this doesn't really get into the process of how those apply and where efficiencies and stuff there, although it, it helps with that, is that?
It, it can, it can have a significant, um, impact on that, um, uh, section or it's title seventeen, chapter nine outlines our application procedures. And it really starts to, um, place where certain applications go to be reviewed. So those, that is a big, that's one of the foundational impact, uh, locations on where do you begin? Do you begin with paperwork? Do you begin with an application? Do you end with staff? Do you end with the planning commission? Do you end with city council? That's really, uh, one of those areas that sets the direction and um, you know, there's different efficiencies on, once you get into there, but that is, that's really foundational on, on process. So, um, there's refinements that can come from there, but it's all born there. If you go to, if you're ending with staff, do you have, is it a land use review? Is it ministerial review? Do the neighbors get notified? Does, you know, that, those decisions, you have, you have a lot of latitude in those areas. But also when, when you start deciding that, it's going to determine what type of codes you can force. So I can't have a discretionary code that I sign in my office approvals. If it's discretionary, it's out there in the public. It, by law, it has to have that public, um, that public reviewing, that public notice. So, uh, it, it will, the type of review you want will dictate the type of rules that you can have or the type of rules you want enforced and how you want them enforced will influence how can these things be approved? So, yes. Uh, a lot of this playbook does come from, uh, I think so, a pretty successful process with the heights. Meaning between phase one and phase two, we will hopefully have learned some things from our, our phase one. We'll want to take that opportunity to adjust the code, the scope, who we engage and how we engage, um, and the, and what we've heard. And I think that's, that's been something that has really improved that project. And I think we carry it forth here, or our recommendation is to carry it forth.
Hearing none? Good job, you guys. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. We'll, we'll have, uh, some of these things worked in for our consultants.
Uh, I move to be authorized city staff to reform with the finalization of the scope of work and budget for the development code audit phase one, as well as refinement of the scope of work and budget for the development code update phase two. In conjunction with D L C D and contractor M I G, including any related I G A with any D L C D that is needed to accept the grant.
Moved by Stapina.
Second.
By Rivera. Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Chair votes, I motion passes. Thank you. Woo, that's a big project.
Thank you.
And important. Okay, uh, we're moving through items that we don't have anything under. We have city manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Two very quick updates. One is just to let you know that, um, ODOT sent newsletters about the A D A ramp improvements. Um, I think, believe those were sent to downtown business owners and residents. Um, so that just out in case we get more questions or comments, it might be because those newsletters are out. Um, and then the other thing, again, just kind of greater context, I wanted you to know that the U S Supreme Court has agreed to take the case Grants Pass versus Johnson, which is along with Martin versus Boise, um, one of the biggest cases that has affected how we address um, camping and sleeping and being outdoors in public spaces, uh, here in the, in the Ninth Circuit and on the West Coast. So no timeline as to when the Supreme Court will address that, but just to know that, that, uh, you might be reading publicity about that as that comes through and share more information as we know it. So, thank you. And then I, I'm really pleased to report that things went smoothly in the city this last week. As you know, city, city hall was closed a couple of days, but um, our crews were out there at five in the morning, two in the morning, um, working and everything went smoothly when the interstate closed. Um, you know, we coordinated with the, with ODOT and Port, um, to get semis off the road and everything went as smoothly as it possibly could. So really proud of, uh, city staff and the hard work that they put in the last couple of weeks.
Here, here. Thanks, Abigail. Questions on that, anybody? All right, continuing with committees, we'll start with Tim. Anything to report from a committee, Tim?
Nothing for me, Mayor.
No meetings.
Megan.
Um, Sister City had their annual fundraiser yesterday. Um, shout out to Kevin for helping with that as well. He's also a board member. Um, and, uh, yeah, public thank you to everyone who, um, bought a, bought a meal or otherwise supported the group. And that's it from committees.
Thanks. Mark?
None for me.
Gladys?
Nothing from me.
Uh, the reason one act met tonight at the same time as city council. So that's two in a row. Um, they're working on their, um, work plan draft. Uh, so I'm not sure exactly what's going on. Uh, and one of the topics being talked about is interjurisdictional transfer. Uh, figure out if they consider secure funding or fine funding to, uh, make that a thing. Um, so I don't have anything else to catch you guys up on that and I'll have to watch the video later.
Did we come up with a plan that allows somebody to attend for us? It just, I worry that we're missing opportunities.
Um, Megan and Amy was there. I, uh, called and talked with her this afternoon.
Right.
Um, so I'm up to date on generally what's going on. Um, the, the, the group is also curious about just their role within, uh, the commission as a whole as well. Is it a group that just rubber stamps decisions or says, oh, yay, those, that's great. Send it on to the people to actually make the decision or what the actual role is. So, uh, without some of that direction and decisions made really laid out, it's difficult to really know what, uh, what to do in that group. That's later. I, I'm, I'm, that's not, that's not a committee.
Any other, any other committee report, Grant?
No, I'm not on it. There is no other committee that I'm on.
I, uh, I have no committee reports for the mayor. Uh, mayor comments? I have no mayor comments. We'll continue with council comments, Grant.
Hey, there we go. Um, exciting, important news, everybody. Uh, the bridge received a $200 million grant from the feds. We were successful in getting federal money. So yay. Uh, that is forty percent of the total money that was needed for the build. Yeah. Heard that, got that this morning. So we got phone calls from senators, representatives, all that good stuff, most all day. Uh, we're on the phone with them during our meeting this afternoon. And now we have, we are down to approximately, um, a hundred and targeting a hundred and fifty-five million dollars to wrap up the entire financing package for the bridge. Yep, um, that would be one hundred and five million from Oregon and fifty million from Washington in money not already committed. So if we're able to, uh, get those things done, then, uh, we will have a fully funded bridge. Um, that, since we got this two hundred million already, um, approved and ready to go, we're going to be full steam ahead on work.
Wow, how exciting. Thanks for all your work on this, Grant.
Thanks.
You've been the soldier for us.
Awesome.
It, it was, it was the top, the lead story in that we're going in this afternoon.
A lot of people are going to be talking about that one. Yep.
All right, Gladys.
Uh, nothing for me. I just want to express my appreciation and thanks for city staff, Abigail and Public Works for um, making sure that our streets are clean. Thank goodness that we didn't lose power like some of our other neighbors did. Um, appreciate the efforts of staff.
Right, go ahead.
Uh, I had, I had one other thing with the bridge. There is going to be a Facebook, uh, live meeting on Wednesday night at five P M. Um, everybody can log in and watch. They don't have to be a Facebook user to do it. Um, so uh, three other commissioners are going to be on there answering any questions the public may have. There will be regular uh, live events or similar public outreach as we go on, but given the news that just broke, might be a well-populated event with lots of chatting. Wednesday at five P M on Facebook.
Mark?
I don't, I don't have anything.
Uh, one minor one, the county meeting from last week was canceled because of snow. Um, so the Rand Road update that, um, staff was going to do, um, is rain checked to an unknown time. Um, and I'll also second, um, Gladys and everyone earlier in the meeting's, uh, commendation of city staff. It was a very long and long storm. So I appreciate that we've all managed to get through it with minimal struggle and damage. So.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll just echo the sentiment. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing it up at the beginning of the meeting on acknowledging the hard work from Public Works in the city. Uh, you know, as a city resident for a while now, I, I could say that I think that things are going a lot better than when I moved here. So that's continuous improvement and I know it's a hard job and thanks for all the hard work. I, I just would like to acknowledge that it's, it's a huge burden on also people that require childcare. Um, I, I think, you know, there's nothing on the docket right now, but uh, I, you know, it's, it's, it's a difficult thing for all of our residents to say the schools are closed again and children have nowhere to go. They have to take off work again. So I'm not sure if there's anything that's going to come of that at some point, or if it's going to hit a flashpoint, but you know, we should do everything that we can on council, in my opinion, to just support um, anything to increase the access to childcare in this community because people are losing money when this happens. Um, and yeah, uh, I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Tim?
Echoes everybody's sentiment on, uh, the city staff and Abigail for navigating the storm. Thank you so much to all of you.
That brings us to the end of our agenda. Do we have anything else for the good of the order? We have the fifth Monday next week, so we'll see you in February. We are adjourned.